Thank you for joining us. Those of you who joined us before who all that were using the webinar version of Zoom, so you can only see the commission and some staff members on the on the screen. Everyone else is in attendee mode. If you are here as an applicant site, we will elevate you so that you can participate with the commission when your application comes up on the agenda. If you are here just to observe, then you will be observing. Please refrain from the chat or the Q and A for any items that are closed. And then just the commissioners themselves, just, you know, either speak up or raise your hand, but be cognizant of what others are doing, please.
Okay, great. And as always, use your name. Okay, roll call. John Goodwin, I am here. John Criss.
Here.
Krista Nielsen.
She is.
Krista, okay. Dan Radman.
Here.
Claire De Scornia.
She she's absent.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, sorry. Yeah. Right. I got it. I got it. Ken Turner.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Okay, Phil Williams is not here tonight. Arthur Cassavant.
Here.
Chris Herring.
Here.
James Bash.
Here.
Okay, super. Mr. Herring, you are seated for Ms. De Scornia and Mr. Bash, you are seated for Mr. Williams for the public here in the regular meeting. 711 Silver Mine has been withdrawn. So if anybody is here on 711 Silver Mine, that has been withdrawn. Okay, we're going to start with the presentation. Francis Pickering is the Executive Director of West Cog. Francis has been a huge help to the Planning and Zoning Chairman Group that I've told you about, particularly vis a vis working on and giving feedback on the legislation and the various versions of legislation. So I thought it would be great to have Francis on. Francis, if you can remind us of what West Cog does, give us a quick back quick, quick background on your background. And then if you can outline the legislation and tell us what's important to us on the commission. Floor is yours.
Happy to do so. Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm pleased to be here. West Cog, the Western Connecticut Council of Governments, is an 18-member body set up under state law. We serve 18 municipalities from Stanford through, I'm sorry, Greenwich through Westport and up to New Milford and Sherman. I'm the Executive Director and I've been there since 2015. One of our roles is we provide referral service for municipalities in the region. So whenever a proposal comes to you for a zoning map amendment, zoning regulation change, or subdivision ordinance change, or change to your P O C D that may affect property within 500 feet of a town line, it comes to the Cog for review. I am joining you tonight from the beach, so I apologize for pacing around. The noceums are eating me alive and I have no air conditioning in my house. So that's my explanation for the location. We did work very closely with the Planning and Zoning Commission Chairs. It was a delight to have John on our committee to go through all the various iterations of housing proposals and zoning reform proposals we saw this last legislative session. Most of them, like any legislative initiatives, did not make it to the finish line. There are lots of ideas proposed and that fall by the wayside over the course of the session. Not every idea is a good one. And there's a only limited appetite to every year and band with the past new concepts. What did pass this year is Public Act 21-29. It was known as House Bill 6107. And the bill does a number of things with respect to zoning reform and housing. And I did send a presentation to Lynn. I don't have the ability to share it right now, but I'll just talk about a few key points.
Francis, I'm in the opening of it now for you, so just keep talking.
Okay, great. Right. So 2129, the presentation I sent out includes links to the actual text of the bill as well as the legislative analysis from the Office of Legislative Research. What the bill does, I can't cover everything in the time I have allotted, but I'll touch on the highlights. It makes some changes of development review process in terms of fees and what you can and cannot do. Not really that important because by and large municipalities already have used consultants for technical review. It does put into effect required biannual training for P Z C members and require certification of Z E Os. That's not really a huge deal. It's probably, it's probably good to have. It requires planning and zoning commissions not to discriminate in decision making so that you cannot discriminate on the basis of immutable characteristics. That is a little bit unclear. I would assume that planning and zoning commissions in Connecticut already do not discriminate on this basis, but immutable characteristics is not defined in state law. So we may see some questions about that potential litigation in the future. For instance, marital status is mutable, but it's a protected class. So the language used there is a bit questionable. Perhaps the legislative fix in the future to replace immutable characteristics with protected classes should be in order. What may be more interesting to you and was talked about more in the public square this year was a couple of other things. One is redefinition of character. And claims were made that character has been used to discriminate in the past. We have not been able to find many, if any, court cases where character was used in a discriminatory intent. So in our view, it was really a non-issue, a red herring of sorts. But the law has been changed so that zoning regulations may no longer consider the character of a district. Instead, they must give reasonable consideration as to the physical site characteristics of the district. And applications may not be denied on the basis of a district's character unless such character is expressly articulated in such regulations by clear and explicit physical standards for site work and structure. So that means if you do care about character, you may want to revisit your your zoning regulations to define exactly what character is in physical terms. This doesn't take away your authority in terms of appropriate use of land, protecting agriculture, addressing soil erosion and sediment control, protection of existing and public, potential public service and groundwater drinking water. And in fact, Public Act 2129 expands your authority in some very important areas. So zoning now explicitly shall protect historic, tribal, cultural, and environmental resources. This was not, you may have done that in the past, but it was not specifically called out. And zoning regulations shall also consider the impact of permitted land uses on contiguous municipalities and on the planning region. So there is some actual expansion of your commission's authority in Public Act 2129 that really was not mentioned in the public discussion. And you may want to take a look at that and see if you would be interested in amending your regulations to cover that. There are some areas where your authority has been hemmed in, or it is, you are given more specific direction specifically with respect to housing. I'll get to that in a minute. But while we're talking about expansion of zoning authority, Public Act 2129 puts into statute a court decision from 1969, so floating zones, overlay zones, and planned development districts are now explicitly statutory provided for. So again, more flexibility, good things. 2129 also empowers municipalities environmentally. So again, this was not really discussed in the public debate, but it's in the law. Historically, or up until now, coastal municipalities have been required to give reasonable consideration for restoration and protection of the ecosystem and habitat of Long Island Sound in their zoning and be designed to address environmental issues in Long Island Sound. And furthermore, to consider the environmental impact on Long Island Sound of any proposal for development. This, these requirements and powers have now been extended to every municipality that sits on or borders a navigable waterway that leads into Long Island Sound. And there is a definition of navigable waterway in state law. Generally speaking, if you can float a canoe or a kayak down the river at any time during the year or down a stream, it's considered navigable. So there is, I don't know all the waterways in New Canaan, but it is conceivable that these Long Island Sound requirements and new powers would apply to your zoning, and you may need to consider amending your zoning to account for that. Public Act 2129 also endows municipalities with new options in sustainable development. Historically, so up until now, the Zoning Enabling Act has provided for solar and other renewable forms of energy and energy conservation as an option. So you can promote those. You now have the option to require those of development. So you can require the use of distributed generation or freestanding solar, wind, and other renewable forms of energy, combined heat and power and energy conservation. Some of this may intrude on the building code. I don't know how that would be arbitrated if you have this new power and it infringes on the building code. But there's a lot you can do from how property subdivided from the outside of the building, how the building massing, location of windows, roof, coloration, et cetera, that can be addressed through this. So you have a real opportunity to green your zoning, address climate change, and improve electric resilience through this. Additionally, state law has enabled zoning to provide incentives for passive solar and subdivisions. Public Act 2129 massively expands this to allow you to provide incentives. And they, they give a couple of examples of incentives, but it's including but not limited to. So you have wide discretion incentives you may give to any type of development. And it's not limited to passive solar anymore, but includes solar and other renewable forms of energy, combined heat and power, water conservation, including demand offsets, and energy conservation techniques. So you could use this, for instance, for, to require energy efficient landscaping, potentially to require fixtures that are energy efficient. That may, again, wade into building code area, but it is provided for in zoning. It could be quite important in southwestern Connecticut, given the water supply challenges we have. Zoning has historically enabled cluster development. Public Act 2129 now allows you to require cluster development if you so desire. So that's another opportunity for your zoning or your subdivision ordinances. So we look at this as very positive. You have a lot more authority to green your zoning if you're interested in doing so. And this has not been discussed, as I said, much. On the flip side, what you may have heard about is new parking requirements. So a cap on required parking, one space per studio or one bedroom unit, two spaces for all units of two or more bedrooms. This applies to all residences in all zones. It does not contemplate visitor parking. However, it only speaks to parking that is tied to a residential use. So if the visitor parking is associated with a clubhouse, or it's associated with a mixed-use development, the commercial aspect, it would not actually cap you. We understand there may be some challenges. Some developments may require more parking that's provided for. And so if you do not feel this will work for you, you do have the option to opt out if your commission and your town council or legislative body both passed by a super majority of two-thirds and have a public hearing and notice and a record of decision with an explanation of why you're doing this. You can opt out. You can opt out until December 30th, 2022. After that point, you lose the ability to opt out. And that applies on a municipal-wide basis. Housing, of course, is the crux of this bill. And there's a lot in it. What hasn't been discussed much and that what I find very important is that zoning must now address significant disparities in housing needs and access to educational, occupational, and other opportunities. It must affirmatively further the purposes of the Federal Fair Housing Act. It must expressly allow for housing to meet the needs identified in the state consolidated plan for housing community development and state P O C D. Historically, this was encouraged, not expressly allowed for. So that small wording change is actually quite significant. In addition, zoning may no longer be used to prevent overcrowding and do population concentration. On a side that you may, an aspect you may appreciate is the Affordable Housing Plan that you are required to complete by 2022, in which if you're participating, the Cog is doing for your municipality may be included as part of your plan of conservation and development. So it can be integrated, not a standalone plan. We view that as a very positive development. Affordable housing should be part and parcel of planning and not a separate set aside. Public Act 2129 prohibits minimums home sizes. They've been illegal since a court decision in 1989, but some municipalities still have them on the books. Not many in western Connecticut because our zoning tends to be updated more frequently. Number of other provisions, mobile homes are to be treated the same as any manufactured home. And then, of course, we get to probably the most substantial change in housing, which is accessory apartments. Something municipalities in the region pushed for, and we got in the bill and in the law now, the public act, is not to have accessory apartments count against the 10% threshold. So being the denominator under H30G. And the reason for that is that very few, if any, homeowners will voluntarily deed restrict an accessory apartment. Because it almost never happens, if ever. That was added there. So that's a positive. However, that only applies to apartments that are permitted or built from January 1st, 2022. So if you have an apartment that you know are coming online or whose approvals have to be renewed, there may be some advantage to issuing a temporary approval and then making it final or permanent in 2022. So it's not counted against you. Accessory apartments, building an accessory apartment, which is what we call an A D U now, will not trigger a septic system being treated as a community sewage system. So that has significant implications for the cost that a homeowner might have to confront in building an accessory apartment. It doesn't affect the fact that the septic system still has to have the capacity for the number of bedrooms in the single-family home plus accessory apartment. And then, last and perhaps not least, accessory apartments statewide are now provided for by rights. And there are a lot of details in my presentation. Make a long story short, their municipality must allow them by right unless a municipality opts out. The opt-out provisions are the same as for the parking cap. But an important detail in the by right accessory apartment provisions are that a municipality must only allow them by right in designated locations or districts. So it's not townwide. A municipality can say, we'll allow them by right in certain areas and conform to the statute without having to opt out. There are a lot of specifications about what must be allowed by right under zoning to be in compliance with the law. Home size of 1,000 square feet or 30% of the principal dwelling unit, dimensional requirements, and other zoning requirements that don't exceed those of the principal dwelling unit. You can be more permissive if you want, of course. Provisions requiring a familial relationship with the resident of the principal dwelling unit, minimum age, renewals, et cetera, those are no longer permissible. But there are also protections. This, none of these provisions override the state building code. You still can limit the use of A D Us or accessory apartments for short-term rentals or vacation stays. And if you have, if the accessory apartments and well are septic system, requirements for that may also apply. The law lays out an approval process, 65-day turnaround. And again, as I mentioned, the opt-out, you have to opt out, the same as for parking, separate but the same by December 30th, 2022. So essentially, that's, those are the contours of the law. There are a few other things, such as allowing cottage food operations in residential zones and establishing a committee in Connecticut's future that probably aren't as significant. But those are more or less the contours of the law. And I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Questions for Francis.
Well, I guess I would just make the comment that it looks like we're going to have to have someone take a close look at our zoning regulations and see which pieces are going to have to be adjusted to now comply.
Absolutely. So a lot of municipalities, you know, I've talked to a few. Some say, well, the regulations with respect to parking don't work for us because we have station areas where on-street parking is very limited and these numbers aren't realistic. And accessory apartments, we're very concerned about density in certain locations that are already very dense. And what they may be failing to see is that there's a lot besides that in there that municipality can't actually opt out of. So it really behooves municipality to look at the entirety of the act and compare it to their zoning and see where there, where there may be some discrepancies or deviation and try to bring it back into harmony. Because as we all know, these things could be used procedurally or in litigation against municipality.
Francis, do all A D Us count towards the numerator in the H30G calculation?
No. So that the problem with A D Us or accessory apartments was under H30G, if they are deed restricted, they count towards the numerator. But there are very, very few of those. So what the law does is says for A D Us from permitted or built from January 1st, 2022, those don't count towards the denominator. However, they do continue to count towards the numerator if they are deed restricted. But I am not aware of any deed restricted because there's, there's no incentive for a property owner to do so.
Okay.
John Criss here. If you all have developed any suggested language to address some of these issues in zoning laws, as well as any preferred language for potential opt-out action, I would find it helpful to be able to look at those. I have no interest in reinventing any wheels here.
So what we've recommended to date is a couple of things. We will be continuing to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission Chairs as a peer exchange to share information among municipalities because we're all facing the same challenges with this public act. There are two issues. The opt-outs is one. The law does require a decisional record and explanation of why there's an opt-out. And I believe it's foreseeable that that could be used against a municipality if it's not a rational and empirical basis. So it really behooves municipality to approach that very carefully and build a really good case about why they're opting out. With respect to the other aspects, some of these are new mandates. Some are broader, such as affirmatively furthering the Fair Housing Act. Some are more narrow, such as cottage food. And then, of course, there are the new powers, such as sustainability and green zoning. And the latter don't have to be addressed immediately because it's just a new authority. You don't have to use it. But the ones that are mandates, you do have to address.
So Francis, for what you know of New Canaan, which you know pretty well. Your point is clear, and I agree with it. We really need to compare our regs to the entire act. That said, if there were two things that you think we should prioritize, what would they be?
Well, I think what I would say is that housing seems to be a more or less perennial issue. And I don't know if we're going to see the same level of engagement, whether the engagement was actual grassroots or astroturf. I don't know if we're going to see the same level next year. I have reason to believe, and you may have seen in the press, but I have reason to believe that we may not have the same leadership in that arena next year as we had this year.
Right.
However, I would definitely recommend, since you have a clock for the opt-out, making a determination about whether you are going to opt out and getting underway on building the most ironclad case you can if you do opt out. And you may not need to opt out. And the second issue I would look at is, since you already are, or through West Cog, we're working on an H30J plan. I think that a lot of that will help address the new requirements for zoning to deal with affordable housing issues. But I think really housing should be at the top of it because that's where a lot of the public attention is right now. Over the long term, zoning in Connecticut has been, it's evolved, but it really hasn't done much in terms of sustainability. And we, when you build a house through a building, tilt-up commercial space may last 12 years or 15 years, but houses have a very long lifespan. And you're baking in environmental costs and household costs for decades. And so I think it's really important to start looking at these things again and say, you know, we're building the New Canaan in 50 or 75 years from now, right now. And we know the way we've been building, maybe not personally New Canaan, but where I live, a brand-new subdivision of 94 homes went in and they clear-cut the entire property. The drainage is a disaster. It's causing flooding. And the, none of the homes have proper solar orientation. It was a parcel where they could have rotated all the homes to have proper solar orientation, proper fenestration, proper overhangs, shading with deciduous trees. And you know those homes will have monumental air conditioning bills. I moved eight houses away. One, the house I live in now is generally 15 degrees cooler than outdoors. Where I lived before, it's 15 degrees warmer. And we were talking about decades of energy costs. It's huge. So I would say, longer term, greening the zoning is probably a positive approach.
That's fantastic. Commissioners, any, one last question, if anybody has one? Okay, Francis, this was phenomenal. I assume we can have you back in the future?
Anytime. And if you ever need to contact me with a question, I, sometimes I am busy, but you can always reach me at F Pickering. That's F as in Francis Pickering at westcog.org.
Okay, that's great. Thank you again. Avoid those gnats. And, and thank you for everything you're doing for us.
My pleasure, and you're welcome. Have a good night.
Care yourself. Okay, let's go into public hearing item number one, 711 Silver Mine was withdrawn, as I previously announced. So let's go to item number two. 684 Valley Road, upon application, Mary C. and Michael J. Franco owners for a special permit approval of Sections 34C6 to allow an accessory structure in the front yard, the one-and-a-half-story barn to be located within 150 feet of second front yard on Turner Hill Road in the two-acre zone at 684 Valley Road. Who is here to present, please? Mr. Franco. Mrs. Franco. Lynn, they're on mute.
Can you hear us now?
We hear you now.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike and Mary Franco here.
Our application is to construct a barn on the Turner Hill side of our property. It is called the front yard, but it's actually the side yard of our property. Our property faces Valley Road. Yeah.
So you could see from the survey where we do, are classified as having two front yards. And we have a short driveway on Turner Hill Road. And we have a, our main driveway is on Valley Road. And we have a two-car garage underneath our house. But we would like, you know, we've always wanted to have an accessory garage, barn, that we could keep things in, storage, and also just for the architectural aspect of it.
For fun, the yard used to have a lot of structures and barns in it historically. We provided an historical document for you guys. It's small. It's about a story and a half. It doesn't have running water or heat, or it has electricity for lights inside. But it's basically a storage barn and just sort of for fun.
Our house, again, we provided some documentation in the file, but our house, the original structure is one of the oldest homes in New Canaan. In fact, if you ever look at one of the very old New Canaan maps, you'll see a little, you know, square on our piece of property because it's, it dates pretty far back in the history of town.
And we've renovated it and tried to keep it in keeping as much as we can with the original, you know, date and time and fixtures and so forth.
The old side, which is closest to Turner Hill Road, is the original structure, a 35 by 35-foot box. And we added on to that in 2004 for the rest of the property.
Talk about this. The barn is, I believe, 762 feet.
672 square feet.
672. I'm dyslexia. Sorry.
And that's it. If there are questions, we'd love to answer them.
Questions, commissioners, questions for the applicant, please?
This is John Criss. I have a question. Is there existing, an existing foundation?
No.
For the barn?
Yes.
No.
So there would be a cement slab. Is it going to be the foundation?
Yes.
Could, could you also talk about the materials you plan to use for the sides of the barn that would be visible as well as the roof?
It would be a traditional old barn wood, wood sides. It would be a traditional old, in keeping with the year of the original house, the barn doors would be the sliding barn doors. And there would be one side door to get into the, sort of if you wanted to walk in rather than opening the barn doors. So it's wood. It would have a little cooper. So it's wood. It would have a little cupola on the top with a light in it. And it would have um it would have the, what do you call the thing? The the hay baler arm.
The hay door up top.
Yeah.
And the uh we'd have traditional cross box on the barn doors. And again, they're sliding doors, not electric. And uh you know, we're trying to make it as visually pleasing as possible. And there are many other barns on Valley Road. It's an old farming road. And uh we think it would fit in great in on the street and in the neighborhood.
And the roof?
Traditional, you know, an asphalt, architectural asphalt shingle.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, um Lynn, uh would anybody from the public like to address this application, please?
If anyone wants to speak from the public, could you just raise your hand on this application? Mr. Chairman, there's no one raising their hand.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Franco, thank you very much. This application is closed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Item number three, uh two oh eight Valley Road, one forty three Valley Road, two twenty five Valley Road upon application Michael Sweeney and Jason Klein, Carmody, Torrance Sandak, authorized agents for Silver Hill Hospital owners for a special permit approval of sections three, two, C eighteen, six, four, G one, six, four, G two to allow for landscape and site enhancements on the property excavate excavation grading of more than a thousand cubic yards of earth material to facilitate the aforementioned landscaping and site enhancements and soil disturbance of more than ten thousand square feet in area to facilitate the aforementioned landscaping. I just said that in the two acre zone at two eight Valley Road and one forty three Valley Road and two twenty five Valley Road. Who's here to present, please?
Hold on a second. I'm um Michael Sweeney is joining you.
Okay.
Mi- Michael Sweeney, please remind me of the name of your um land of the landscape architect, Mr. Gold.
Lynn, his name is Mr. Goldie.
Robert Goldie. Is he signed in on? Mister? Oh, there you are. Thank you for raising your hand.
Go ahead, please, Mr. Sweeney.
Uh thank you, Mr. Goodwin, members of the commission. My name is Michael Sweeney. I'm a partner with Carmody, Torrance, Sandak, and Hennessy uh office in Stanford, Connecticut. I'm pleased to be here this evening on behalf of Silver Hill Hospital. Uh with me this evening is one of my colleagues at Carmody, uh Jason Klein. Uh also two experts who have uh assisted in uh the materials that have been submitted to the commission as part of this application. Robert Goldie of Towers Goldie, he prepared his firm prepared the uh site plan uh plans that you have in front of you as well as uh the landscaping plans, which really are the crux of this application. Uh also with us is Brian Baker of Civil One Engineers. Uh Mr. Baker's firm prepared uh the engineering reports that you have, all of which received uh uh no commentary from uh the town departments. No effect on drainage by virtue of this uh enhancement of landscaping and sidewalks and certainly no impact on the existing septic systems. Uh also this evening with us, I can't see if everyone's with us, a number of the executives and management at Silver Hill Hospital. Uh Dr. Andrew Gerber, he's the president and medical director at Silver Hill. Lisa Benton, chief quality officer. Rick Markello, chief financial officer, and also Peter Puccelli, the director of safety and support uh all at Silver Hill. I'll just give a brief introduction and then I'll have uh ask Mr. Goldie to take over who can uh better describe the details of the application. Uh we haven't been in front of you for some time. I was looking at twenty sixteen when uh the Gray House application was submitted. Was a pretty smooth application. Lovely building was constructed. At that time, there were some enhancements made to uh the parking layout, some reconfiguration of the roadways uh for safety purposes as well as some septic work that was done. So this application, really, we see it as a continuation of the work that was planned uh with the Gray House. Uh there was disturbance to the front lawn uh by virtue of uh the admissions, a house construction. It's not a particularly attractive uh lawn, so you'll see as Mr. Goldie will describe uh the enhancement and really a beautification that is really the um the nub of this application. You will remember that the the Silver Hill Hospital is a world renowned psychiatric hospital, consists of above forty four acres in the uh two acre residential zone. The campus is bifurcated by Valley Road, about half of the campuses on the east side, half on the west side, each about twenty two acres plus or minus. Uh this application largely deals with the the west campus. The use is a special permit use. It's a permitted use uh under the regulations of the P O C D. We're classified as an institutional use. Uh the application, the main theme to our application tonight really is safety and landscaping enhancement. As I mentioned, we see this continuation of the plan that started with uh the admissions building. The plan involves hundreds and hundreds of new plantings, uh trees, a water feature. And uh I think what's going to be a lovely uh wildflower natural lawn that's been designed. One thing that the application does not do, and it it calls for no intensification of the use of Silver Hill. There are no new buildings and again, uh no intensification of any programs. This is a an outside uh landscaping uh application uh driven by safety and for beautification. Uh one thing I would mention is probably about eight years ago, one of the prior applications, Silver Hill set up a liaison group with uh uh the neighbors. And periodically, the group will meet with uh representatives at Silver Hill to talk about operations, plans, uh events that are going to take place. Also, applications well in advance of them being filed, and that was done in this case as well. Uh Mr. Puccelli had a meeting with the liaison group prior to the filing of the application. And as he relates to me, there were no uh negative comments that he received and uh essentially were all supportive. To my knowledge as well, since the last building was constructed, uh no complaints have been made uh of any substance to uh Silver Hill either directly or that were addressed in the liaison group or particularly to uh Lynn Burke's Avenue as part of her uh activity uh in zoning enforcement in the planning office. Uh I did receive an email yesterday from one of the neighbors on Huckleberry Hill, Sandy Mintz. I did uh represent to her and promised to her that I would um uh relate her comments to the commission this evening. I'll do that a little bit later, but I did want to mention that as well. Uh received no comments or calls from any of the neighbors, a dozens of neighbors who received notices. Uh when I spoke with Lynn this morning, I don't think she had received any either, but there may be, of course, be people here at the meeting or uh things that happened this afternoon. One final note I'll make is I won't go through all the special permit standards. I think we addressed them all well in our application. Uh we comply, in my opinion, with all the special permit standards that you would look at uh in considering the application. I suspect you probably don't want me to go through them, each of them one at a time, but if you want me to, uh please uh ask me questions and and we can review them. Construction at the site, uh when this this work is being done will be fenced in, won't be viewable from Valley Road. Uh all soil and erosion protections will be um applied during the construction period. There'll be no queuing of cars or construction vehicles on Valley Road. Everything will be self-contained uh within the campus. So with that introduction, I'll pause. If you have any questions for me, uh I'll give it a go, otherwise I'll turn it over to uh Mr. Goldie.
Why don't we uh go ahead with Mr. Goldie, please, Mr. Sweeney?
Thank you, everybody. Um again, my name is Bob Goldie. Principal with Towers Goldie Landscape Architects in New Haven. Uh next slide, please. So um as Michael said, this uh this project is basically a uh a tail on and finishing off of the previous project that came before you uh at Silver Hill, which was the uh what's now called the Ackerman Center. It's the admissions and uh administration building in the uh scene in the lower left-hand corner of this plan. At that time, uh that the building was constructed, a uh a number of vehicular improvements were made to the campus and parking was added. But the pedestrian environment was left pretty much the way it had been. So this project is all about improving the pedestrian environment. That's uh on the the end of safety, on accessibility. Um and also in just in terms of allowing the patients and visitors and staff to get out into the landscape and take advantage of this beautiful uh area that they have that's been created by this loop drive that was constructed uh for four or five years ago. And really to to enhance the landscape in that sector to to provide a focus for this campus. So what you see here is um that that circular loop drive and virtually the entirety of this uh project that's before you now, with the exception of a few connections to other pedestrian connections to other buildings uh in areas of the campus, but virtually all of the work we're proposing is inside that loop. And it's a series of walkways and landscaping. Next slide, please. So this is an engineering drawing that was uh was provided. Um it's it's all of these are in the the package that was submitted. But it it more clearly shows uh the in in heavy lines, the road improvements that have been completed. And then in lighter uh lines, the the walkways that are proposed through the center of this campus. This is actually an erosion and sediment control plan that shows uh where we're intending to put sediment control uh features, stockpiling, stop soil, that sort of stuff. Next slide, please. One of the aspects of the previous project that had been done was actually an improvement to the septic system uh on several buildings in campus in this campus. You'll see it in the 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 blue lines here. Both on the to the to the left-hand side of the the meadow and to the right as well. In constructing those septic systems, virtually this entire meadow area, this entire lawn was ripped up. The topsoil was stripped. The uh not only the septic system was improved, but drain lines were added as part of that project. And that drainage uh which handled all of the additional parking and and drives was also uh anticipated at that time, the inclusion of these walks as part of the contributing area to the drainage. So and and I believe you've seen the drainage report that was submitted that verifies that this additional amount of walkway is easily handled by the previously constructed drainage improvements on the campus. Next slide, please. So this slide sort of um illustrates one of the issues, or actually two of the issues that uh we're trying to address. First is the obvious condition of this lawn. It had not been a properly uh relandscaped or or seeded uh because it anticipated this project coming along. It needs additional topsoil. And furthermore, uh what you see here as a sort of a herd path is the sort of desire line for uh patients and staff through this central space. There are no walks there now. We'd like to give them a walk to go on and make it a little more interesting than a direct straight line that you see here and that exists today. Next slide. So in essence, this uh this image illustrates what we're trying to get at here. We're trying to create a series of landscape spaces, a a sequence as as one walks through the campus to really enhance the beauty of the this beautiful, you call it campus that that uses their landscape as part of their therapy. So this is the view uh from Valley Road looking in towards what's called the main house across this meadow area. We would in improve the the landscaping on both sides. Improve the crosswalk that exists um at the intersection of both uh access drives to the campus on either side of Valley Road. And uh next slide, the next uh slide illustrates how as you walk into the center of this space, the intent is that you be surrounded by a wildflower meadow. So that is the sort of central focus of this space. We are trying to get away from a manicured lawn and get towards a more unnaturalistic and uh we think more beautiful um changing landscape uh as you go through the summer with uh with various wildflowers blooming at different times. Next slide, please. So a little more detail uh on the actual proposed improvements. This is a this is our layout plan, again, part of the package. What it shows is uh asphalt walkways. The walkways in general are five feet wide. We wanted to keep them as as narrow as we could. We didn't want this to become all walkways. The intent is to keep them as narrow as we could, but still allow for the adequate uh tra- pedestrian traffic through the space. Um you'll you'll notice to the upper right corner, the box that is shown there is really uh uh an enlargement that I'll get to in a minute. That is the area where we're we're we'd like to locate a a lawn terrace is sort of an overlook or a prospect so that it it would provide the first outdoor space for patients, staff, visitors to use to be outside either as part of their therapy or perhaps with visiting uh relatives. Provide some private areas for for people to sit and talk. So this space doesn't exist today. There's no real place to you to to be able to sit and enjoy this central open space on campus. That's what this creating this outdoor uh terrace, this lawn terrace is all about. It is connected towards the uh the main house with a set of stairs that will be built so that it sits more or less mid slope between the drop off of the drive that that exists today and the meadow itself. So you'll be able to look out over the meadow uh towards the distant views. Next, please. In terms of grading, what we try to do is to lay out the walkway alignments, number one, to be interesting and curvilinear, but also to work with the topography that's out there. So by and large, we're just sort of cuffing this uh walkway into the existing terrain that's there. We wanted to provide as much accessibility as possible so that all the spaces that are being planned are going to be accessible. So that uh required certain amount of of grading. And then again, because we're uh planning on this space, this uh lawn terrace between the main house and the meadow itself, that area will need to be lifted up with with the fill so that the most amount of of earthwork on the site will happen at that location. Next, please. In terms of planting, uh as Michael pointed out, uh we're providing a quite a robust planting plan. Again, the intent is to augment the landscape that that exists. So we're working with the palette that exists on on the campus, most of which is native material. But we're using it in a again, a more naturalistic fashion. We are prevent uh planting quite in a a robust buffer which will enhance the trees along Valley Road right now. If you remember back when the uh last application was in, there was a parking uh an additional parking strip added between uh the meadow and Valley Road. That area which has trees in it will be reinforced with planting, again, naturalistic mixture of of trees and shrubs. The trees would be both flowering trees and and shade trees. The most intense planting is proposed at the actual uh terrace, the overlooked terrace. For obvious reasons, that's where people are going to uh to stay for a while. And so we wanted to enrich that, create a a welcoming space around it. Uh the vegetation on the meadow side of that that uh area is area is going to be lower with the exception of the shade trees that one would look underneath. But we wanted to actually enhance the views with with the proposed planting in that area. The next, next slide, please. So this is a blow up. The upper right hand corner is a blow up of the planting in that lawn terrace area, showing quite a mixture of plant material, again, mostly native material, but there are going to be some flowering shrubs and trees for interest. The other segments that you see on this drawing are the the interstitial connections that will complete the pedestrian path system so that all of the buildings on campus have an adequate pedestrian connection to this space and through the campus, much of which either doesn't exist today or exists in an unimproved condition. Next slide, please. So again, the whole point of this is to create an enhanced landscape and to provide enhanced safety for the pedestrians. We've taken care of the vehicular traffic previously. This is really about pedestrians. Next slide, please. Again, as you walk it up towards this this prospect lawn terrace, the idea is that the planting becomes enriched. You can see the water feature, the water feature that is there for not only visual but for sound as well to give some additional amount of quieting to the people who are using this space. And I will say that there's a lot of interest in on the part of Silver Hill about using this space for therapy, whether it's group or individual therapy. Again, this type of space in this general location doesn't exist today. The next slide. Another view of the overlooked terrace. On the opposite side of the slope walk, we will need stairs. The grades get a bit steeper. So we have stairs and as I mentioned, that there will be stairs that connect this terrace directly up to the stairs that go from the drive directly into the main house, the original building on campus. Next. So again, this is a sort of an aerial view of this this lawn terrace, showing the intent here, an enriched landscape tucked back away from the road, overlooking in a beautiful wildflower meadow. And that pretty much encompasses everything I wanted to to say. Michael, I don't know if the engineer has any comments?
I don't think right yet, Bob. I think we can turn it back for any questions at this point.
Questioners, questions for the applicant? Mr. Ward.
Yeah, Dick Ward. You mentioned the water feature. What is the source of the water? And is there an estimated amount of water consumption that would be used?
It's a recirculating fountain. It's it's only about 10 inches deep. There will be a well, a recirculating trough to get the pump and the mechanical equipment. But we're trying to use the absolute minimum amount of water that we need to get the effect. I honestly, I don't have offhand the volume of water. But in terms of depth, it's limited to about 10 inches.
Thank you.
Hi, James Bash. It looks like the project is going to lead to a lot of significant improvements. But a question that had more to do with the short term impact of the excavation, the construction of the project and the level of disturbance it might cause to residents or neighbors. So can you talk a little bit more about, for example, for excavation, what the duration of excavation is likely to be, how early in the morning it's likely to start? And then the construction period as well, the potential impacts to residents or neighbors during that phase of the project?
Is Peter Porcelli on on the call? Peter has is overseeing the actual construction.
Hi, yes. Hi, good evening, everyone. Yes, so the the construction hours were were scheduled for eight until 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday. We won't be doing any work on the weekends. The schedule and we're expecting this job to take about six months to complete. Generally, we're, you know, that's where we're, that's the timeline that we're looking at. And it's quite a big job, as you can see, and it's going to take just about that amount of time to complete it.
Okay, and has there been any concerns or feedback expressed from people who live on abutting properties about the level of noise that might be created by the project?
I have not received any complaints or concerns about that. I don't know if anyone else has called in or written in about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chris?
John Chris here. Question for the landscape architect. Could you share with the commission some of the choices you made on the plantings in particular, native versus non-native plantings and relative attractiveness to pollinators and other fauna?
Glad you asked. You know, as I, as I did mention, the plant list that we have provided, it is by and large native material. It is not exclusively native material. We are planting shade trees, maples, oaks, no, no ashes, primarily maples and oaks, flowering trees, amylaciers, red buds. We also have some magnolias, some some non-native trees. But by and large, the trees and particularly the shrubs, we typically stick with a close to native palette. I don't know. We could go to the the plant list if you'd like to take a deeper look at that.
Thank you.
It is on the appendix of the presentation.
Page fourteen, I believe it is.
What's the sheet number again?
It's page eighteen of the presentation.
That's that's the deck, so there's a
I can't remember which which one I clicked on. It's on landscaping and hardscaping improvements plan. It's page eighteen of that.
So it would be LA fourteen.
Yeah.
This drawing number, which would be closer to the last one.
There you are.
I bring this up because I spot checked, more than spot checked, some of the names and like Periwinkle is European, Norway is from, well, it's kind of obvious. Hydrangea is from Sakhaline Island, China and Japan, Cotton Easter is Siberian China. I'm wondering why, when there's so many useful native plants that local fauna, particularly local pollinators find useful and why non-native plants would be used?
Well, we are trying to provide a level of interest in terms of the sheer quantities. You know, most of the plants are of the larger variety. With regards to shrubs, that's where we'd like to add some degree of interest. I will say with regard to pollinators, the one of the main reasons we're interested in planting a meadow, a wildflower meadow, is for that feature to to attract pollinators.
I get that.
So but I, you know, again, the the selection of plant materials is intended to provide enough interest through the seasons and provide color as well as there are quite a bit of native plants here.
And just question is why such were not prioritized? And whether that was an issue you considered in putting together this list?
Well, we try to keep a balance of plants. Honestly, I do think that there is a balance here of native material and and introduced material. Prioritized. Again, if if you look at where we're using plants, the most intensive planting around the terraces where people are going to sit or where we're proposing the the most amount of shrubs. As you get to the outer edges of the of the planting design, the plant material is largely shade trees and flowering trees that are mostly native. So it's the introduced plants typically are right up against where people are going to be milling about and wanting to enjoy some some bright.
Another question on the landscaping. Will all the stone be natural stone?
Yes.
Thank you.
You hear me?
Yeah, we hear you, Mr. Turner.
Okay, for the record, Kent Turner, 229 Valley Road. I'm in a butter to Silver Hill. I find that the the design, the proposed design is will be a welcome addition to the neighborhood. The planting is robust. It looks well done and the feature of a little bit of a waterfall and area for people to gather, I think would will will be a very nice enhancement. However, the, you know, the devil's in the details and that's how this thing is constructed. And I think we need a lot more information to better understand just exactly what are the construction logistics? You know, the traffic flows? How many cubic yards of earth is going to be moved or brought in? And, you know, details like the wheel washer so that the trucks don't track all the dirt into Valley Road? The safety aspect of the truck movements? Are you going to have flagmen? Anyway, I have a series of questions that relate to how this actually gets implemented and would like to hear from, perhaps it's Mr. Porcelli, to explain a little more about it.
Hello, Mr. Turner. I'm sorry, it was very difficult for me to hear what you were what you were saying. You're asking for more information about the construction aspect of it and what we're and how we're planning on keeping this place safe and ours?
No.
I'm sorry, it's very hard. I'm even having trouble hearing you now.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, but if you can turn, if there's a way you can turn up your volume, you're not as loud as most of the other speakers.
Can you hear me now?
I hear you better now, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm having a technical problem here tonight. The the hours aren't the issue. It's really construction logistics. You know, what's the the flow of traffic, the truck movements? How many trucks do you expect on the site? Where do they stage? You know, are you going to have flagmen to control the movement on and off of Valley Road? Wheel wash? How are you going to keep the Valley Road clean? Are trucks going to idle? Are they going to back up? And I'm going to hear ee, 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 24/7? Anyway, if you could address some of the construction issues, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So there's no, we're not planning on having any trucks idling for hours on hand. The trucks are going to come in, they're going to go into the main circle area that we identified. That's where the fencing is going to be up. They're going to come in, they're going to go inside there, you know, take out, you know, dump their loads. They're not going to be backing up and moving around, you know, all times of day. As far as wheel washing goes, the the contractor is is going to be handling things like that. That's not something that I had honestly thought about. So we can certainly talk to them about it and make sure that anything that happens regarding that, they maintain that so there's no dirt and debris going out onto the road. The as far as flagmen and things of that nature go, we have, you know, security on site here. We also have construction folks that can that can give us a hand. We're not going to just have anybody barreling out onto onto Valley Road. You know, trying to make sure that everything is safe and as safe as can be. So we don't anticipate there being a huge amount of traffic generated from that. They're going to be wheeling things in and getting it done. And it's not going to be where they're going to be on Valley Road all day, you know, creating a lot of traffic and a lot of problems for the for the residents in the space.
How many cubic yards of fill or cut are you going to do?
I don't remember the exact amount of cubic yards it was in the application. Do you do you know that, Bob, off the top of your head or?
If I gave you a number off the top of my head, I'd be wrong, but I it was over a thousand.
Well, that's over 100 trucks. Over what period of time?
It would be over the course of the project, over the course of, you know, six months. And all of that material is not going to take six months to get into the campus.
Right. Okay, could you just kind of inform me as to when a truck arrives at the site, where do they enter and where do they exit?
They're going to enter through the main entrance.
But there's more than, there's more than one main entrance.
The newly made entrance over by the admissions building, which we're categorizing as our main entrance. They're coming through there and go right into the gated space, the fenced in space. And that's where they're going to do the majority of their work, unload their trucks and dump their materials.
And where do they exit?
They will exit through the same entrance and exit and go out onto Valley Road through that space.
Okay. Is sums up my questions for the moment. Again, I think the the design is very handsome and will be a nice addition to to the neighborhood if this is done properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner, is there any other questions?
I had one follow up question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Chris and then Mr. Cassavant.
Thank you. On the plants that are being purchased, will any of them be sprayed with neonicotinoids prior to purchase sprayed by the grower?
I I have never been asked that question. I I assume we could make that a requirement, but I, you're you're way out of my horticultural league here. Can you say that again?
Neonicotinoids, it's a just spray that's often put on plants. And it was actually banned by the US government for some public spaces because of harm to pollinators. It's banned, I think, in Europe. Many plants are sprayed with it, sort of keep them pretty for sale. I think Home Depot actually will list whether it's been sprayed by that. But as a beekeeper, person interested in pollinators, I can, and the expressed statements on the part of the applicant of wanting to be very green and so forth, whether this would be an aspect of the plants we would be purchasing.
I appreciate my attention. We'll look into it. I I honestly, typically plant material is sourced from I, I honestly, typically plant material is sourced from quite a variety of nurseries. And as landscape architects, we often don't get into that level of review, we can however, put it as a requirement for the the material, if, if that's something that is deemed necessary.
They were banned from National Wildlife Refugees as an example, so just asking a question, thank you, you've answered my question.
Cassavent.
Just a quick question, 1,000 cubic yards of fill, has there been any assessment of possible water changes to abutting properties? Or will the 1,000 cubic yards simply not affect that water flow?
There should be no alteration to the water flow leaving the site. As I mentioned, the, the only area where we're intending to put fill material is that one terrace that's right opposite the main house. That's already, it's an existing slope that's there now, it is not a low spot. The, the low spot in this existing meadow is close to the road and in the center of the, the length, north-south length of the, the meadow. So we don't anticipate it affecting the, the groundwater or the runoff at all.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
John, Chris Herring had a question.
Sure.
Just a question, two questions, one on irrigation and the second on the crosswalks. And so I saw, I was looking at the, the site plan review and I did see a note for irrigation to the sodded areas and the terrace, I believe. I just wanted to understand, is the, is the meadow going to be irrigated and how does that intensity compare to its current water use?
No, with the, the irrigation is being limited to a small strip of turf that's going to be adjacent to the walkway. The meadows themselves are not meant to have any irrigation at all. So it's a matter of, of maintaining that, that turf strip adjacent to the walkway and as you mentioned on the terrace, the turf terrace itself.
Okay, and then I guess lighting in the crosswalk, it looked like the bollard lighting that's detailed in the plan is a, you know, a dark scare, dark sky compliant design, is, is that correct?
It's actually the existing light standard that was developed for and by the campus. And it's been used extensively on the campus, so we're simply using that fixture in, in, in new areas, so it's, it's essentially replicating the, the light levels that are out there already, it's just increasing them on the walkways.
Okay, and are, are they are they dark sky compliant or are they just, you know, what they are, you know?
It's actually a custom fixture, it's a custom designed fixture and fabricated fixture. If, are they certified to be dark sky compliant? I'm not certain of that, I, I, Mr. Pachelli might know the answer to that, but because it was a custom designed fixture built for and by the campus, I doubt there was any official certification of it.
Okay, okay, and then on, on the crosswalk, is there, has there been review and safety review, I see just it's going to be striped, is there going to be any, you know, push button strobe or anything to improve safety on the crosswalk or is that deemed unnecessary?
The crosswalk crossing Valley Road was actually part of the initial project and was built at the time that the, the physical striping was built at the time that the intersection was moved and realigned both sides of the campus. So that was sort of permitted at that time. As I, I recall, there was pushback against an activated signal there, so it's basically a stop sign for pedestrians in, in, in the walkway and, and the, and the painting.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the answers.
So it's James Gatch, which is a follow-up question. So given the duration of the work and it sounds like the construction will consume a lot of daylight hours. Again, I want to go back to some concerns I have about the level of disturbance, the noise on, on residents actually. So, you know, it's a mental health facility where you have people that, that are there that want a peaceable environment and they're there because they suffer from anything from depression to psychosis, and so I'm curious what the feedback from the Silver Hill staff has been in terms of the, you know, the impact of this extended project consuming most of the hours of the day and how people, how residents are experiencing their stay and the impact it might have on residents.
I'm not sure if Peter or someone from Silver Hill might be able to field that question.
So as far as the, as the impact goes, we, we certainly do want to make sure that we're, we're trying to keep our, our residents and our patients in mind. You know, construction, unfortunately, you know, makes, does, you know, make a lot of noise and in order to do things that move the earth and do things like that, it, it requires a lot of noise to be made. We're trying to, you know, obviously limit where we can, the, the noise that's, that's coming from that. I, I don't know how we can successfully do that all of the time, but we're trying to limit, you know, the hours. You know, as we, as we start moving along, you know, getting further on into, into the project, there'll be, it'll get, it's going to start to get darker, we're not going to have as much daylight. You know, once that happens, we're not going to be able to continue to work as long as possible. As far as impact goes from treatment, I don't know if, if there's been any feedback to the executive team as far as any, any concerns from patients or, or residents. But nothing like that has come to my desk or, or to me. Okay.
I can add a little color to that only from past experience. There've been some significant construction projects done on site with the K House, with the admissions building. Then all the improvements to the buildings over the years, going back to when Dr. Ackerman was CEO, Chief Medical Officer of, of the hospital, I remember posing the question, the same question to him on prior applications, how does, particularly when we did the cell tower. For those of you who lived in town back when the cell tower was constructed, that was done at the request of the town and the neighbors in order to hide the cell tower along the ridge because the neighbors were concerned, albeit the need for the cell tower and that Turner Ferris Hill, Valley Road area of town, which had no coverage, actually the coverage still gets a little weak as you go further north. But at that point, I remember asking Dr. Ackerman about construction of the cell tower, other construction as well. And basically he assuaged any concerns that I raised in connection with the hearings we had then. They say that the, the other professionals, they know how to, you know, treat the patients and, and how to deal with any disturbance around the campus. And certainly they've done that on all the past applications and all the past construction. Recall that many of these buildings date, you know, well back into the last century. And many of them have been upgraded to comply with ADA and current building codes, so there's been a lot of construction going on there with the past 15, 20 years or so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Sweeney, before we open to the public, any concluding remarks that you're in?
No, I think the question about the crosswalk, I think by Mr. Herring is well placed. That was vetted and talked in great detail at the last application. We ran it by the police department, fire marshal, Mr. Baker, I remember looking at it. And in keeping with the, the desire to have it be very benign and passive, it was decided not to have anything other than a well-marked crosswalk. And I think the determination was made that given the traffic level that everyone felt it was safe so long as it was marked. So that was discussed in a lot of detail at the, the Gray House application. I do appreciate the comments made by Mr. Turner, who I think may be sitting on this application, but I'm not certain. Since he's a, a neighbor of ours. And again, to allay his concerns, the, this is certainly like, not like one of the $10,000, $10,000 square foot monoliths that we see built around New Canaan nowadays that goes on for 18 months, it'll be a six-month project. And we give you our assurances that we'll make every effort to keep all the trucks contained on site, to use the entrance that we've represented this evening. And certainly Silver Hill will be completely responsive, if we get any questions raised by Ms. Avaney about any issue on site, we place to address it immediately, as Silver Hill has always done in the past. I think that's all I have, Mr. Goodwin.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sweeney, Lynn, would anybody from the public like to address this application?
If you'd like to speak on the public, you raise your hand and we do have one person with their hand raised, Alisa Benton.
Okay. Ms. Benton?
I, I actually am from Silver Hill and my hand was raised before just to speak to the issue of the disruption to the patients, which I appreciate. I appreciate the concern and the thought on that. But my hand was raised to address that, just to say, you know, every improvement we make is with them in mind. And we feel that the, that the gains of this project for the therapeutic environment far outweigh the temporary short-term disruption. And, and the staff is all very supportive of this for the patient population.
Okay, thank you. Lynn, anybody else out there?
There is no one else, but if anyone else would like to speak, if they would raise their hand. There, there are no hands raised, Mr. Chairman, at all.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Sweeney, you're all, you're all set, I assume, right?
If you indulge me, there's one other comment I want to make and based upon a promise I made to one of our neighbors in an exchange that we had yesterday and this morning. I see that Ms. Sandy Mintz isn't here tonight and that's consistent with an email that she sent to me yesterday, which I responded to and we had a email colloquy back and forth. And since she told me that she wouldn't be here tonight, she did ask me to relay her remarks to the commission and although it's a little unusual, I said I would because as you can see from the non-existence of comments from our neighbors, I think we did a pretty good job reaching out to our neighbors ahead of time and getting comfortable with what was planned here this evening, as well as the welcome comments from Mr. Turner this evening. But anyhow, I did get an email from Ms. Mintz yesterday. I'll read through it kind of quickly, she cannot participate in, in the meeting this evening for the special permanent site plan application, that's why I'm sending this to you, Mr. McSweeney, she has my name wrong, but the property is at 169 Huckleberry Hill Road is where she lives, she abuts the east campus portion of the hospital. The building's closest to her house on Huckleberry are the lodge and the building with the swimming pool for frame of reference. She points out to me that trees have died over the years of natural death, apparently there's a wooded area between her house and her campus, I assume. Trees have died of natural deaths, wet ones have increased, abutting properties have felled and removed trees, not our property, abutting properties. It's not as dense as it once was, this is sad, but what is annoying is light emanating from the backs of the east campus buildings. And what I pointed out to her in her response back or to you this evening is that there's no plans for any work done, being done on that east campus with additional lighting on buildings, so there's certainly respect or concern and understand it, but these are existing conditions. I wrote back to her and said, we're happy to engage with you, I gave her Mr. Pachelli's contact information. She then wrote back to me and said she probably wasn't interested in meeting with Mr. Pachelli, but she did want me to relay this to the commission, which again, looked at unusual, but I said I would. She, she related that she understands the security reasons to have illumination on the site. She's concerned about people getting lost in the wetlands and ending up on her property. And she concludes by going forward with the plans you have sent me, I hope you will keep in mind that the bright building lights that shine into the woods near Parting Brook are annoying and intrusive, especially in the winter months. So I wrote back to her and said, we'd be happy to engage with you. And she then wrote back to me and said, please have it noted today's hearing that I oppose protest request less intrusive lights on the backs of the buildings on the east campus construction, the hospital's planning. And again, we're planning no construction on, on the east campus, so I want to make that perfectly clear that everyone understands that. But I did mention to her that as we do with all our neighbors, happy to meet with her and see if there's anything that can be done to help her with the concerns that she has, but it is separate and apart from the application before you this evening.
Understood, okay, thank you, Mr. McSweeney. That's a joke. This hearing's closed. Item number four, 941 Ponus Ridge Road, upon application of Linda Andros, owners for two lot re-subdivision of 2.538 acres of property located in the two-acre zone at 941 Ponus Ridge Road, who is here to present, please?
So Ms. Andros is, is here.
Hello?
Hello?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
We can hear you.
Okay.
It's Bill Avery, husband of Linda Andros and Linda Andros, the property owner at 941 Ponus Ridge. We want to subdivide our property and carve off a building lot of about 2.5 acres. I think we've submitted all the required engineering reports and surveys, there's no wetlands on the property. And we look forward to your approval.
Okay. Ms. Avery, this is a subdivision, this is not a re-subdivision, is it? Have you, has this property been previously subdivided?
I guess, yes, yes, well, slightly, yes, we bought the property at 955 Ponus Ridge. And then took a little property from that, gave it a little property to make that a building lot, which is now under construction. So I guess this would be a re-subdivision, yes.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
It's John Chris, will all utilities be buried?
You know, the, we do have a buyer contention on getting a deed and your approval. We have met with him and with Eversource and the, the electrical lines are above ground to our property and off of the pole on our property, it'll be underground to his property, yes. He doesn't have a builder yet, but that's his plan.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
This is Chris Herring.
Mr. Herring?
So my question was, and Lynn, maybe you could help me here, the, the lot size is just north of two acres, what is the zoning for this area? Four acres.
Two acres.
Two acres. Two acre zoning.
Okay, and the, the other piece of property that was carved off is also two acres, is that right?
The remaining lot would be, it's about four, four acres. What we're left with on our house.
Yes, our existing property will be a little over four acres.
Okay, and the, the length of the, the access point, the length of the driveway, is that, is there a shared driveway?
No, it's not going to be a shared driveway, it's an access way and you know, I'd have to go to my computer to get you the length, you'll see it there on the survey.
Yep, yep, I'm just looking at the site plan here. Okay, thank you for those questions.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Lynn, why don't we open this up to the public? Okay, Lynn, why don't we open this up to the public, please?
If anyone wants to speak from the public, could they just uh raise their hand, please? Mr. Chairman, there is no one here to speak. No one's raised their hand.
Okay, super. Uh this application is closed. Item number five, ten thirty one Owen Oak Ridge Road upon application of Amy's Abatakas, Ruchi Law Group authorized agent for Kindridge LLC. Owners for a special permanent site plan modification approval of section six four G and three four C seven for an accessory building. Which exceeds a thousand square feet of building coverage for property in the four acre zone at ten thirty one Owen Oak Ridge Road. Um Mrs. Zabatakas, please.
Um Ms. Ms. Zabatakas, before you um your architect, remind me his name. Could he just raise his hand?
Um Armon DiBiase.
There he is. Thank you.
Um yes, we've Aron DiBiase is and oh sorry, this is Amy's Abatakas from Ruchi Law Group on behalf of the applicant. Um I'm joined, um while I can't see everyone who's in it who is here, but um Alex and Annie Phillips are the. Individuals who own Kindridge LLC. The architects are Cynthia Filikoff and Armon DiBiase. Um landscape architects Catherine Herman and Rebecca Montross. And engineers Adam Serini from DeAndrea Engineering. Um so um this is actually a modification of a special permit. Um I'm not sure how many of the current commissioners were sitting on the application back in twenty eighteen when we originally came forward, but. Um Lynn, if you can put up the presentation, I can sort of walk through. Sorry, you're still pulling people up.
Yes, you can start talking. I'm pulling it up right now.
Okay, so um so the original um so. Before prior to twenty eighteen, this was two lots with two single family residences and the larger lot. Was also had a barn and riding facility as well as a pool um and a. Office uh garage structure up near Owen Oak Ridge. The um original house on Owen Oak Ridge was quite close to the road. Um in our original application in twenty eighteen, we sought to merge the two lots. And um build one single family residence with a barn and equestrian facility that that single family residence also had a pool. And to retain the office garage structure up near Owen Oak Ridge. Um that application was approved. Um we, since that time, the um owner's vision for the property has changed. And um perhaps importantly, they've decided to home their um horses on a different property. So it's changed the plans for this property considerably. So the new plan, which is the modification that's before you now. Um does retain that office garage structure um near Owen Oak. Um it changes the location of the house. It actually moves it away from the reservoir. Um it removes the barn structure, removes the riding area. And then as accessory structures has the pool moved further away from the house than the original pool location. And um has a gym and tennis court um accessory structure. So this, what's on the screen right now is the original. Prior to any um work being done. And then the next slide is the approved application. So again, there was extensive regrading um as part of that uh prior application um and which was approved at that time. And then the next slide should be the um what we're applying for now. Correct, so those the um sort of outlined in orange are the the new structures and then you can see down to the. Lower left hand side is where the pool is um and to the right, close to where the old ten seventy seven Owen Oak House was. That's the um gym and tennis court structure. So um and then that then the next slide you'll see is um. That that's the engineer's drawing. The next slide is the the landscape architect's drawing. Um where you can see as well um some of the new screening along the the property lines that's that is being added. And the next slide, Lynn?
Yes, I know my my computer's thinking, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Okay, well, we can just skip ahead. So basically what I've done from here is um right, so that's the land, that's the landscaping plan and this is all in your packets. So what I did as far as the presentation from here is because this is sort of a large lot and it's hard to see on the screen is tried to show you quadrants. So the first is the um I'm just gonna talk, I'm not gonna try to talk north, southeast and west because the it's not. Setups that way on the um. Axis, but so the upper left corner of the property closer to Owen Oak Ridge, which is where the main entrance drive is. Um that is that that will that curb cut is staying where it is currently and will lead into the parking area at the house. Um you will notice that there's some regrading up um near that entrance drive, which is actually sort of a landscaping um structure in that area. Um the next slide uh shows the, you know, now upper right quadrant. So you can see that retained um office building, which we had was pre-part of the prior approval. Um the roadway in from the old ten seventy seven Owen Oak driveway, that road, that driveway in remains the same. And then when it enters, this enters into the body of the property, it now splits in two with one drive going down towards where the um. The gym is one drive going towards the house. Um that little box you see right at the um fork in the road is a shed with a generator in it. And that's in that location, so it's sort of centrally located to the property and an easy location for the propane deliveries. Um so then if you go to the next slide, um since we've sort of shown you two splits of the house, this is the house. Um the upper view is the west elevation, which is what you would see um if you're looking at the house. You won't see it this well from the road because this property slopes down dramatically and the house is built into the into the hill. So even this, you wouldn't see from the road because of the distance back from the road. Um and then what you see on the the slide below, it which is the south elevation is looking over towards the parking area. And you can see from this elevation how the um the the slope of the land is such that. Um the how the house is, like I said, is built into the into the um slope. And we actually have some open but covered courtyard areas um looking down towards the reservoir. So it's not three stories, even though from this angle, perhaps it looks a little bit like that, but those are all open areas. The um the area where the garage is is um actually considered a separate accessory structure. Um because it has a um living area on the second floor, the first floor is the garage area, but it's only connected to house by a portico share. Um and I think that's the first time I've pronounced that correctly, so go me. Um so your that area is um. Considered a separate accessory structure from the the building itself. And I only mention that because as part of this application, um it is a modification of the regrading permit that was already granted. But also a special permit for the um accessory structures over one thousand square feet, and that is the first of the accessory dwellings. Not dwellings, accessory structures, I apologize. Um the next slide, you can see some other views of the house. Again, looking at the house from. The reservoir, which is the top view. Um again, you can see those um those covered terrace areas. And then um from the north elevation, which is um as if you were coming in from that ten seventy seven driveway. The old ten seventy seven driveway. Um the next slide is the quadrant with the gym building in it. Um so again, you can see we have a single story gym building and a and a tennis court in that area. That gym building would be the second of one thousand, over one thousand square foot accessory structure. Um and you can actually see the on the next slide, the gym itself. Um the views, the elevations of the gym, like I said, a single family structure with um some garage storage space attached to it. Um the next slide is the lower left quadrant, which is where the pool and pool house is located. The pool house is under a thousand square feet, so that's not part of the um accessory structures that require a special permit. Um and the idea here is that this pool is very close to where the old um riding ring was. And so that old riding ring area can be turned into a nice flat um play lawn as it is it's being referred to. Um let's see, and then the next, on the next slide, you can see the interior of the and and elevations of that pool house. Um you can see it's just a small sitting area with bathrooms. Um and also on the left hand side of that slide is actually that um generator um hut, which I've pointed out at the fork in the driveway. Um so basically, as there you have all of the information and we have the engineers on the call if you have any questions for them, but. Um you know, the the drainage report as um was presented last time, um no adverse impact on the property, no adverse impact on any of the neighbors. Um we do have inland wetland approval. We've we've tried very hard to make sure that we're protecting the wetlands as well as the reservoir. Um one of the things that had come up in the last application was some concerns from the um water company representative about protecting that reservoir during construction. Um and we have incorporated into this plan everything that we had discussed at that time, such as um double silt fencing during the course of construction for the areas closer to the water. Um I think the one of the good positives here is that actually there's a lot less happening. Close to the to the reservoir in this new application because the house has been moved um significantly further up the hill. Um let's see. And um let's see, so yeah, so the special permit is under six point four G for the um regrading. Um again, that was granted in the last application, but of course it's modified considerably for the new um layout. And then under section three point four C seven for the two new um accessory structures, which are over a thousand square feet. And as I said, we do still have the um. The office barn structure that was is was preexisting before any application was filed and was approved in the last application. And as well as the pool house, which is less than a thousand square feet. Um so that's really a summary of the project. Um I wasn't sure, I I I do have, um as I mentioned, all of the relevant experts are available for questions. But I thought rather than having every single person go through the application, since this is really a modification rather than a new application, I might just open it up to questions from the commission at this point.
Commissioners, questions?
Turner? Yes, um could we revisit the office use? Uh could you describe it a little more in detail what uh? What the office is and it was it uh I don't, I was part of that uh hearing. I don't recall. Uh the approval for uh an office.
Well, it's not.
A larger permit. Uh could you clarify that?
Yes, so that building, and and when I say office, I I don't want it to sound as if I'm talking about a um commercial office space by any stretch of the imagination. This is a a home office as opposed, and it's so it's not a dwelling. Um it's a um there's a garage and there's off office space up there. It's being you, it will, the plan is for the um. Uh owners to use it for sort of their own space to. Get away from the rest of the family, for lack of a better word. Um and the reason that was part in the last application. Um that was um approved as a special permit because it is an accessory structure within a hundred and fifty feet of the the front yard. But it was a preexisting building so that we have not touched. I mean, it's been renovated, but has was not touched from the um before any work was done on the property.
Okay, I'm just still curious about the number of parking spaces. Um if it's part of the uh residents, I I would imagine they just walk. From the main house to to the office. Uh why so many parking spaces?
Well, the um the owners themselves have a few cars as well as um. Uh recreational vehicles, so um that's the reason that there are excess spaces for for vehicle storage. I don't know that all of them will be used for cars. Um but that is that there's space there for them.
Okay, thank you.
This is Kristin Nielsen. I have a a couple of questions. So I know that we're hearing this application because of um accessory buildings in excess of a thousand square feet. Do you know um what the proposed coverage for all of the buildings that you just discussed is for the site and what the total allowed coverage is for the site?
Um yes, that's on the survey. Um Adam, do you have those numbers handy in front of you? I think you're muted. Oh, there we go.
Okay, all right, I see that there. Yep, this was exactly my question, in which of the which of the accessory structures exceed the one thousand square feet. I can see that that's. Delineated here as well. Um my second question is about the water company. Um you said you're using all the same mitigation strategies to that were negotiated last time. Have you shown this new plan or revised plan, I should say, to the water company to make sure they're comfortable with this?
Yes, um I I um reached out directly to Casey Cortez, who's the um representative who was um we spoke with last time. Um he took a look at it. Um I followed up with him to see if any comments and he said he did not. Um I he. I was hoping I'd actually get so far as to get him to fax to um enter in a letter of um. Support, but I wasn't able to get him that far, but he did say that he would not be here this evening and didn't have any comments.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
So with the uh, this is Dan Radman. So with the uh. Repositioning of the house, the main house uh different than the original application, where there was a significant amount of. Um regrading and uh new fill and cut fill going on. Uh looks looks less here. Um has a calculation been done to determine the exact amount of fill that's going to be moved around? And is any new fill being brought in or is this all cut and move onsite?
Um I believe that it's all cut and move onsite, but let me let Adam uh address that directly. Maybe he'll actually talk this time.
Sure, um on on our development plan. If you want to pull it up or not, it has the calculations on there. It shows how much is being cut, how much is being filled. And we've tried to balance the site as much as we can. If you look at a cross section of the house um from the road down to the reservoir. There is some cutting on the high side and some filling on the low side, so it balances out. Um and there is a net cut, which means there's excess soil. And which what is going to happen is the contractor is going to try to fill. Or deposit as much of that soil as they can on the site without having to cart it away because that's that's annoying for them.
So uh I see that on your drawing. Uh looks like you've got uh a cut of sixty one hundred cubic yards and a fill of thirty seven hundred, so leaving you with an excess of twenty four hundred. What what exactly you're going to do with the twenty four hundred?
So the contractor has two options. They can either take it away. See if anyone else would like it. Um or they could. Find space on this large property to kind of smooth out the slope some more. But we're showing grading here to limit uh to limit the disturbance area. But in reality, a lot of the site is going to be disturbed for construction. We're gonna. We're gonna, you know, restrain that as much as possible with the silk fence and the construction fence. And they can deposit the excess fill onsite as needed.
Okay.
Uh Ms. Zabatakas versus the two thousand eighteen approval, is is this a net increase or a decrease in coverage?
Oh, I don't know that I checked that. Adam, do you know the answer to that?
I I don't know exactly. Um U K has a specific way of defining coverage. Um in the regulations, so. There is a little bit more of impervious coverage. Whether or not that actually counts, um but we have accounted that for that with the redesigned drainage system.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull up the old, um and I should actually say for the record, but I would like the prior. Since this is a modification, I think it is with the prior application included in the record of of this application. Um so I'm just trying to pull it up myself to see if I have the actual coverage, the survey with the coverage numbers. Actually, yeah, last time it was a net cut. Let's see. More coverages. Yeah, I'm not, well, I don't know that we can answer that question quickly, John, um but I I do as. Yeah, I'm not, well, I don't know that we can answer that question quickly, John, but I, I do, as, as Adam pointed out, we were well below coverage previously and now.
Okay, okay.
Oh, here we go. Yeah. No, that's existing. Alright, sorry, I can't find it.
We, we can move on.
Yeah.
Anybody else, commissioners? Okay, Lynn, let's open this up to the public, please.
If anyone wants to speak from the public on this application, can you please raise your hand?
Anybody, Lynn?
There is no hands raised.
Okay, in that case, this application is closed. Item number six, 1171 Valley Road, upon application of Katie Wagner. Not going to get this right, Cucidet Consulting LLC authorized agent for Ronald and Lisa Blatt, owners for a special permit, site plan approval of sections 34C3 and A2B for the demo of a non-conforming garage and reuse of the existing foundation to create a detached accessory residential structure with one bedroom, one full bathroom, kitchen, study and laundry room for property in the four acres zone at 1171 Valley Road. Who's here to present, please?
Katie, don't, is that you? Katie Wagner, that's listed as Katie. If it is, can you just raise your hand? Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Alright, my name is Katie Wagner. As you mentioned, I'm here on behalf of the owners, Ronald and Alita Blatt. They currently have a non-conforming garage in their yard. And they would like to use the same foundation in order to create a cottage for their son. Because it's non-conforming, we need to come for a special permit application for your approval in order to change it to a residential accessory dwelling. And I think that's about it. That's really what we're asking for here.
Okay, Commissioner, questions for the applicant?
Dan Radman here. So the dwelling unit, second floor. By the way, whoever you, the architect you used for the drawings, kudos. I haven't seen hand-drawn submission drawings in years.
Much more detailed.
Yeah, so the dwelling unit, is, is that a, just a single bedroom upstairs? Large, large room on that entire floor?
Yep, one bedroom, bathroom. Yeah.
Got it. And is there a site plan that shows the driveway and approach to the, I see the survey and it's got sort of a drive noted in there. Is, is any of the driveway changing or approach or parking area changing relative to this garage?
No. All the parking is the same. It has the existing parking spots on site. In fact, the person that will be there doesn't drive, so. So yeah, no, the driveway and all of that is staying the same, all the hardscape.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
John, one question just on the septic. Is the septic called out in terms of have the septics? This is Chris Herring for the record. Is the septic going to be part of the main house's septic?
The septic will be part of the main house. The health department reviewed it, brought it to the state, the state approved it. And actually recommends that it be part of the main dwelling as well. So everything's been approved by the state and the town from that respect.
Thank you.
Commissioner John, Chris, will utilities be underground or above ground?
I actually, the contractor is actually on the line. He would know better. Lynn, I don't know-
Katie, what is his name? And can you raise his hand so that I could find him really quickly? Because there's-
His name is Don Hoyt, and he just texted me. He, he's on the phone. It's all underground.
What's his last, what's the last four digits of his phone number?
Well, Lynn, we, Lynn, we just got the answer.
Okay, that's fine.
Further question. It will be an, an, an electric kitchen as opposed to maybe a propane tank, propane tank outside, or what, what's the thinking?
Let me get back to you. My apologies.
Yeah, this is Chris Herring. Related question just on the heating.
Yeah, Chris, let's-
It's propane.
Okay.
So there'll be a propane tank outdoors next to the building?
Let me see if this will help. I'm going to call him. Like, hold on, now he's changing. Let me call him and get him on the phone with you guys. Let's see. I'm sorry, he had called in, but he doesn't know how to get through. Hi, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on speaker, hold on. Alright, Don Hoyt, you're on with the commission for New Canaan for the special permit.
Okay, so the, the oven will be electric. And the, the only thing outside will be like the Mitsubishi units that are electric for the heating and core. So no, no propane, no propane tanks.
Okay, so outside HVAC units for the, for the dwelling are contemplated? Is that a yes?
They're like, they, they're like one foot wide by three foot. They're really small. They're not traditional condenser sized units.
Will that be on the close to the road or the interior?
It'll be on the opposite side of the building, so I mean, from the road, you can't see it.
Thank you.
Mr. Herring? You're on mute.
Yep, just to be clear, it looked like the HVAC was to be determined based on heat gain. But I just heard you say, Mr. Hoyt, that you've determined that those will be electric split systems? So it'll be an all-electric building effectively?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And it looks like the, the orientation from a, a solar gain perspective has been incorporated from a, you know, sighting perspective. Looks like heat gain has been calculated, et cetera, so that looks good. Thank you.
Yes.
Kent Turner? I'd like to congratulate and acknowledge the designer and also the owner for rehabilitating the existing building. It was somewhat of an eyesore. It's a very, very attractive building now. And I think that everybody's done a great job to bring this old property back.
I'll, I'll pass that on to the homeowners. I'd love to hear that. It's been a dream of theirs since they built the newer house on the premises in 2005.
Job, job well done.
John Chris again, the exterior of the building will be wood clavards and, or aluminum siding, or what are you contemplating?
It'll be wood clapper. And the, the plan is to make it look exactly like the existing house, like the main house in the property. So it's, it's all wood. It'll be a cedar clapboard and then the, like the corners and all the decorative moldings, we're going to try to match it as close as possible to the existing house.
And, and the roof?
The roof will be cedar, just like the existing house.
Thank you.
And, and currently it's also cedar right now.
Okay, everybody good? Okay, Lynn, let's check with the public, please.
Does anyone want to speak from the public? Mr. Chairman, there are no hands raised at all.
Okay, great, then this application's closed. Item number seven, deliberation, possible action. Let's make some decisions. 684 Valley Road, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Kent Turner? I put forward a motion to approve. And justification, the reasoning is that the barn will be a nice enhancement. It's in keeping the character with most of the barns on Valley Road. And it's actually tucked back from Turner Hill and Valley Road and cited, I think, in a very well, well-placed location. And I see no reason that we should hold up this application or not approve it. Thank you.
I second that.
Okay, any further comment on the motion?
I think it's a very handsome building in keeping with the agricultural heritage of the town. I, I see the impact on neighbors and on the community as being nothing but positive. I would vote for approval.
Okay, great. Okay, I'll call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Radman?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavan?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Option number, option, application number three. 208 Valley Road, AKA Silver Hill, do I have a motion for approval or deny?
I'll move to approve.
Reasons for approval, Mr. Ward?
There seem to be going to a great extent to beautify what appears to be a rather rough unfinished area. It's the center portion of their campus. They seem to be going to some extent, and I assume expense to make it as attractive and pedestrian facility as possible. It's not going to be just a lo, a large lawn, but meadow has a water feature that they say will conserve water. It's not going to be a, a heavy user of water since it just recirculates. So I, I think it's a, just a plus for the area. Now, there are some concerns that have been raised about the construction period time and the noise. Neighbors are perhaps properly concerned. I think that they did explain as best as they could to minimize the noise, but construction is construction. The facility is, is aware of the potential impact on their patients. And say that that is something that they are aware of and will handle.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ward. Do I have a second?
Chairman, Kent Turner, I would like to second it with some formal or reasonable conditions.
Go ahead.
And I think that we need to formalize the constric, construction logistics, you know, exactly, you know, how the traffic is going to flow, how it's going to work. You know, are they going to have flagmen? Is there going to be a will wash? I think, you know, in the spirit of everything, we heard that, yes, in fact, they're going to provide these things, but I think we should formalize it in, in the form of a condition. The hours of operation, I heard Monday through Friday, no work on the weekends. And that there would be staging of all the trucks, construction equipment internal to the site, not on Valley Road. The main entrance would be to the, to the south entrance, not the north. And the other condition would be, let's see. Work hours. Well, I think I covered it, but I, I firmly believe that, you know, Silver Hill has good intentions. Sometimes, you know, things change, becomes difficult to follow promises. But I think we need a, a few conditions to formalize this to make sure that it happens.
So, Mr. Turner, what I hear you saying is a construction plan along the lines of the applicant's testimony. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Ward, you move the motion. Do you accept that as a condition?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, any, any other discussion of the motion? Mr. Chris?
Yeah, yes. Well, I, I think the idea of putting enhanced plantings is a generally good idea, and I understand the therapeutic value of this, and I would support that. I was a bit disappointed in the planting plan. It seems to be a good plan, but there were, I think, opportunities for it to be a great plan. Reason for not using more native plants and taking a more diligent focus on pollinators and other habitat was disappointing. And the, the topic of the pesticide, you know, niconos, it's not too much of a left-field question for those in horticulture, so I was a bit flummoxed why it was a surprise. And it really can be very harmful. So I am persuaded to not support the motion.
Okay, any other discussion of the, of the motion?
Yeah, it seems bad. I, I was just going to say that I'm in the medical health field, and so I think the, you know, the level of disturbance, I'm, I'm definitely concerned about that and appreciate Ken's comments and the conditions that he would impose for this application. I agree with that. I, I would also supplement that I have some concerns about the impact on the residents, you know, many of whom are there for acute care. So they're really at-risk situations. And, and there's a spectrum that covers anywhere between psychosis and depression anxiety by putting, you know, gamut that Silver Hill serves and serves incredibly well. Because they are such a top-notch group of professionals, and I'm sure take, took into account as much as, as possible what mitigating steps they could take, if any, in terms of the impact on the residents. I'm more comfortable knowing that facility and the type of professionals that they have in-house accounting for that, which I think is going to also be a benefit to, it's a benefit to the, to the residents. It's going to be a benefit to the, to the neighbors as well. But I do have that concern. I appreciate Ms. Bennan's comments that that was taken into account. I would have wished, I would have flushed, it was flushed out a little bit more. But I haven't heard any reason not to support the motion on that account.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Mr. Chris?
You're muted.
I'm mute. Oh, sorry, no.
Okay, Mr. Radman?
Yes.
Mr. Squarant, I'm sorry, Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavan?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item number four, 941 Ponet Ridge Road subdivision, do I have a motion for approval or denial? Need somebody to jump into the cold water. Need somebody to jump into the cold water.
Uh, John Chris, I move we approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion of the motion?
I'd say that the new lot would be created is larger than the minimum size within the zoning area. There don't appear to be any wetland or other issues occurring here that could be problematic or potential concern to the commission. I've heard nothing from abutting neighbors adversely. And the applicant appears to have gone through all the appropriate administrative channels for a legal subdivision.
Okay. Did I get a second?
It was me, Krista.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, Krista, further discussion of the motion? What I'll add is, whether it's a subdivision or a re-subdivision, as, as everyone knows, subdivisions are fairly straightforward exercises, as long as they are appropriately ticking all the boxes from a technical perspective. The other thing I'll note is, is we do have the ability to delineate requirements of open space, but I, I think, given the sizes of these lots, the nature of the subdivision, lack of access to any other open space, that open space is really not an issue, because it wouldn't have a net contribution to the town on this particular application. Anybody else? Okay, I'll call the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes, Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Radman?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavan?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Item number five, ten thirty-one Ohno Ridge, do I have a motion for approval or deny?
Uh, this is Dan Radman, I motion to approve.
Reasons for approval, Mr. Radman?
Um, I think it's a well-thought-out plan, less less radical of a cut-and-fill than the previously approved application for the site. I think the coverage is not excessive for the size of property that it's on. The dispersment of the buildings creates a less dense condition of the various structures on the site. And they're able to reuse the existing office structure, barn structure, institute, which was one of the requirements of the original application approval from a couple of years ago as well. I think it's a handsome design. I think it, it works really well on the site.
Okay, great, thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I saw Kent first, I'll take the second from Kent, any further discussion of the motion? Okay, what, one thing I will say is, I agree with Mr. Radman. For those of tho- for those of you who were on the commission a few years ago, we spent a lot of time on this application. And I agree with Mr. Radman that this strikes me as a net lessing complexity than the original application, so I think that's a good thing. Anybody else? Okay, I call the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes, Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Radman?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavan?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Eleven seventy-one Valley Road, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
I'll move it, I thought that was an excellent idea to convert a poorly disused, non-conforming structure into a rather architecturally sound property, and I think that the use as proposed is consistent with our P O C D.
Great, thank you, do I have a second?
I second that.
I'll go with Mr. Radman, he was loudest.
Usually am.
No comment. Further discussion of the motion?
Just to pile on, it was just a very handsome structure, and nice to see that they're tying in the septic with the main house and limited additional site coverage, seems like a very efficient use of the space, I'd also like to recognize the use of an all-electric building, you know, in, in keeping with the conservation aspects of our, our pursuits, you know, all-electric is, is much less intensive than, you know, propane or oil.
Okay, great, okay, I call the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes, John Chris?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, super. Uh, let's go back, well, we are in regular meeting, item eight, eight twenty-four G, please see plan for bumpouts on Elm Street in the intersection of South Avenue and Elm Street. Mr. Man, you're presenting?
Yes, I am, sir.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much for having us. This is a proposed plan for bumpouts on Elm Street, specifically from South Avenue West to the mid-block crosswalk at the Playhouse. Excuse me, this, uh, this project has its genesis back in twenty eighteen when we resurfaced Elm Street itself and had to bring with the restriping plan the area into compliance with state statutes regarding parking within twenty-five feet of a crosswalk. At that time, we hired Michael Galante and his firm, take a look, and they gave us a proposed layout, which is the existing layout that we have now in the downtown area, that was approved by the Police Commission and restriped in twenty eighteen. Since that time, we've run into problems with people disregarding the hashed, no-parking areas, large trucks, people pulling in for short stops into various businesses, things of that nature. And then through that time, we started looking at different ways to protect the pedestrian in this very important area. We partnered with Westcog and the city found a dairy inn for a bike route study, and part of that also had pedestrian improvements. And the plan that they put forward at the time mirrored the plan that we have here. We submitted a community connectivity grant with the state for that project, unfortunately, while I felt we had a strong application, we, it had an equity action item in it, and we didn't score well on that portion, and therefore, we didn't receive a grant for it. Excuse me, subsequent to that, we took a further look in the area, and then COVID hit. So at that time, we decided to, in order to enhance the outdoor dining and enhance the, the, I guess, the, the entire experience in the downtown area, we put in barricades almost exactly where the, this plan would be to enhance outdoor dining, to allow outdoor dining, I should say, and allow pedestrian access. So we've had a look already at how it functions. We then met with the Police Commission, the Police Commission approved the, the barricades at least twice, once on their initial installation, and once on an extension at time. And then subsequent to that, we went to them and met on three separate occasions, April twenty-one, May twelve, and May nineteen, specifically around this design. And they, they approved it in May of nineteen, uh, May nineteen, for, uh, moving forward, and we're here today to ask for an eight dash twenty-four review. We feel that it's in keeping with the plan of conservation development, specifically three separate sections, section three, section four, section five. Under section three, preserve and enhance the community character, there is a specific bullet under preserve and enhance physical character, it states that the Village Center should be vibrant and walkable. We feel that adding these bumpouts in these areas, one, will enhance pedestrian safety, and two, increase the pedestrian experience in and around the downtown, which is actually section four B, extend and enhance the pedestrian experience in the downtown specifically. We feel that with this, and given the new state mandate whereby you need a four-foot clear walk zone through your entire area, through all the dining areas, this will actually help us with that as well. It'll also take care of, uh, it'll prevent people from parking in the no-parking areas, since they'll be hardscaped. And that brings up the last portion, which is section five, enhance livability. Specifically speaks about enhancing the walking environment, and then where sidewalks are recommended in business areas, we should correlate the sidewalk materials for function within the area. And we are looking to create these bumpouts with granite curbing and brick material. So be, uh, just basically the, the look that is in the downtown area now, only a little bit wider. So on the northern side, from South Avenue to the Playhouse, we'll be taking out that entire parking lane, that parallel parking lane, we'll have a loss of five parking spaces on that side. But given the fact that we'll be placing bumpouts on the southern side, and thereby preventing cars from striking a pedestrian in the crosswalk, we actually gain back five, so it's a net loss of zero with this plan from the previous striping plan of, uh, be pre-COVID. So I don't know if you have any questions about the plan itself or aspects of it, but I'm happy to answer anything you have.
Missioners, questions, you men?
Yeah, this is, uh, Dan Rat, Tiger, did I just understand you correctly that with all of this captured sidewalk area, or captured parking area for sidewalk, and some partial restriping, that there's a net loss of zero parking spots pre-COVID?
That's correct.
How?
We, we lose five on the northern side, but then we'll gain five back on the southern side. If you can help me out and put it back, specifically, if you're looking at South Avenue, the intersection of South Avenue and Elm Street to the right, you would call that the southeastern section, that bumpout, since it's preventing someone from striking a pedestrian in that crosswalk, we're able to gain spaces in that area. And then in the area between South Avenue and the crosswalk at the Playhouse, we're able to do the exact same, so we're able to gain spaces back in that area as well.
You're able to gain, you're able to gain, you're able to gain spaces by reducing the width of each of the parking slots?
No, we, we are reducing the width of the parking spaces by six inches in that area between South Avenue and the Playhouse itself, but the larger game, the larger game, that only allows us to actually fit everything in, the larger game is the fact that while you'll, you can almost see down below, underneath the hash mark in the AC in front of what is now currently Dunkin' Donuts, that is all currently hashed, there's no parking, given the fact we're able to protect the pedestrian and the walkway. Because of the bumpout, we can then move closer to, uh, to the crosswalk itself and gain, regain spaces in that area.
So all of those polling spots are going to be eight foot six, and then all of the spots to the east of South Avenue going back towards Main Street, are those all going to be restripped at eight foot six, too?
No, those are nine, and the other ones are nine and a half, so they're actually bigger. We could, we, so we, we reduce them only by six inches in the, in this one area, everything else is, is standard to what we have currently.
But reducing that, but six, that makes it a very snug spot. Given, given the driving habits, people in town, and the parking habits, and the size of vehicles in town, isn't that going to get a little too snug?
No, we, we, when we, if you look through the picture and you, you, and you see the analysis, you'll actually see that everyone shades to one side of the parking stall. This actually has, uh, some additional area in that in that realm. What we had done at the time during the restriping originally for the Police Commission, we had them striped at nines, and the Police Commission asked us to go to nine and a half throughout, so they're all at nine and a half, we're reducing it back to nine.
Gotcha, so on the north side, where you're capturing new sidewalk now, I, I'm just concerned about what we're doing here, we're effectively picking winners and losers in terms of the restaurants that are on Elm Street. You're, you're creating outdoor dining for La Panco de Dan and for the Elm, Elm. But the restaurants to the west and Rosie's to the east are left stranded with no additional dining, outdoor dining area. Doesn't that seem worth?
We're not looking at, if, we're looking at a pedestrian enhancement situation and a pedestrian safety aspect, not necessarily.
Was there, was there a pedestrian safety issue pre-COVID?
There's a, yes, there's a pedestrian safety issue in the fact that everyone is not adhering to, uh, the no-parking areas specifically throughout that.
Okay, let me, let me cross. Understood, let me, let me rephrase that.
Sure.
Prior, prior to the issue that we had three years ago, where there was a complaint waged with the state about our striping areas, where we then lost parking spots to restripe. Prior to that, was there a pedestrian safety issue?
It was a pedestrian safety issue in the fact that we had parking too close to the crosswalks, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, not exactly what I meant, but.
Okay.
So so why aren't we, why aren't we treating the zones on the north side of Elm Street the same way you are on the south side of Elm Street, meaning you're, you're curbing out areas that have been identified by the state as necessary safety zones with no parking? But in lieu of that, we're now creating additional outdoor dining only for a select number of, of restaurants?
At present, correct. The, uh, the feeling is that if it is successful and we want to expand, we could certainly expand on the northern side, east and west. The only caveat is, at that point in time, we, we don't know where we will be able to recapture parking spaces.
Well, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of my big-picture comment here is, I've, I've spent the last thirteen years on P and Z, or, sorry, twelve years on P and Z, and one item that's always been an issue is parking in town. Parking on Elm Street, parking in the lot behind all of Elm Street, parking at the Center Street Lot. It's always been an issue, and we've always looked for additional parking, so we're already talking about an application that's going to take away seventy-six spots from the Center Street Lot of, of, you know, patron and commuter parking and, and employee parking. And now we're looking to take away, well, I know you say there's a net, but we're taking away five spots where we could do this scheme and actually gain five spots. Right?
Good.
So we could do something that would help the town in terms of parking and not hurt us on parking while only benefiting certain stores.
We could do that, except we feel that this would be a, a much greater enhancement pedestrian-wise, and a feeling for in and around the Playhouse in the center of the downtown, we feel that keeping it in one continuous unit. Michael Galante felt the same as far as keeping that curb line, instead of bumping in and out for that curb line for those five spaces, it was better to have it one continuous line itself. We've also gone through COVID for the past year and a half, whereby we've had barricades up and down the area to the tune of a loss of at least eleven to thirteen separate spaces without, um, without many complaints or complaints at all, I should say. I haven't received any complaints about lack of parking during this entire timeframe, and with the, with the barricades that we had out at present, we were losing up to thirteen spaces on both sides of the street at that time, this is now gaining those back and having a net loss of zero.
But to be, but to be fair, the, the traffic in town was also a net reduction in retail traffic over the course of COVID, so you don't have as much pressure on the downtown parking situation over the last eighteen months. So it's a little bit different, what I'm afraid of is setting a precedent here for this, you know, let's call it two hundred linear feet of Elm Street, or whatever it is, creating a outdoor dining and additional sidewalk area that, you know, six months from now, or twelve months from now, the balance of the retail tenant tenants that are to the east and to the west are going to be asking the town to do the same, and we're going to end up losing additional parking spots. I think we're setting a bad precedent. I think the town as a whole was a little disappointed when we needed to modify all of the currently striped no-parking zones and had a net loss of parking needlessly, in my opinion. I think we're, we're fostering a worse condition here.
I tend to disagree, I think we're, we're making, we're, we're finalizing a plan that was, began in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen with that restriping, and now formalizing it and, uh, enhancing the downtown at that time, and then also protecting, protecting the pedestrian whereby just mere stripes on the road, we're noticing that we can't.
Mr. Chris?
Yes, Mr. Man. I will complain about the lack of parking on, on Elm Street, but I understand it, and I understand why outdoor dining was necessary given conditions, so I decided to suck it up and take one for the team and understand what you're trying to do there. The, the question I have for you has to do with the intersection of South and Elm, in particular, the west-southwest corner, let me walk you through what my thinking. Let me walk you through what my thinking here is. It's a public safety issue. So as I understand that the edges of this brick, these brick bump outs will be elevated from the uh asphalt roadway, is that correct?
That's correct. They'll be, they'll be at grade with the with the existing sidewalk.
So I'm looking at that corner, which is the uh. Uh where the uh uh art gallery is on uh the south. West corner and it bumps out and as what does the other one now. Going north on Elm and you have to, excuse me, north and south and you have to turn left. On Elm because it's a one-way. Um the bump out really doesn't interfere with the uh with the um travel lane because you're going to be. More towards the center of the roadway uh as you as you drive up. Um however, many people tend to bump through the uh. Uh stop sign a little bit, so they do a bit of a Hollywood stop and move into the um. Uh walkway if there's, if there are no pedestrians because you really can't see around the corner very well with parking. And so if I look at turn uh going west. On Elm and turning left and then south on South Avenue. Uh I'm just wondering if there's a potential choke point or crunch point there because some of the roadway will be taken up by the bump out. And therefore there's going to be a choke point there. And I'm just wondering if there's a a traffic issue and safety issue we should be thinking about here. Thank you.
You're welcome. We uh we ran turning templates um for our fire truck and also for large tractor trailer. Um specifically on Elm Street, turning left onto south or on South Avenue, turning left onto Elm. Um and each was able to make it without an accommodation. Um so the feeling is that uh the the bump outs will actually. Not cause a a restriction or a traffic issue in those areas. And it'll actually um, given the the bump out on the southwestern side, it will actually help delineate the turning movement. Um for a car turning left from South Avenue onto uh. Onto Elm Street uh and and also from Elm Street onto South Avenue with that additional bump out on the southeastern side will help delineate the travel lane and keep everyone in their. In their respective uh areas.
Are there any particular snow plowing issues that uh the town may have in dealing with these bump outs not, you know? Take a chunk of the curb out when getting the snow and ice off the roads?
Yeah, well, that's one of the reasons why we armor plated him with granite, one that it's a.
Okay.
We don't necessarily have to be concerned with that. Uh will it hinder our operations? Will it will it cause us a little bit of um headache and heartache? Yes. Um I won't say it isn't. Right now we have, you know, curb to curb, they can, they can run a airport plow straight up. Uh we did review with the highway department and that was one of the reasons also why we wanted to keep a continuous curb line along the northern edge. So we didn't have to come in and out um with the plow itself. And then we are going to increase the drainage um on at both uh and the eastern edge of both bump outs uh on the southern side. Whereby you see the hash marks um so that those will be snow disposal areas for us. Um in the short term and then we'll be able to clean out the snow a little bit quicker and uh more efficiently from those areas. And it'll provide an area of melting. That's the reason for the additional drainage, but we have reviewed with the highway department and while. They're not completely satisfied, obviously, because it's a change and and it will um hinder some of the operations or slow down some of the operations to. Um it's a, it's a, it's a trade-off that we'll that we'll have to make.
Thank you, Mr. Man.
You're welcome.
Chris Herring. I had a couple of comments to make, so um I happen to fall on the side of this being a a very strong move for the downtown. Seeing the the vibrancy in downtown with the outdoor dining. And the economic development that that's, you know, garners. Um I think this is a smart move that is a best practice. I think having people walk an extra hundred feet is probably. Better for their waistlines as well as, you know, the downtown experience. Having seen, you know, my daughter get ice cream or other things downtown, she's. Highlighted how few places there are to sit in that downtown and I think. Having a curb bump out like this is the recommended addition to, you know, most downtowns. You look at a Rye, New York. Where you have a raised curb crossing, it reduces traffic speed. It creates a a more friendly downtown and will drive economic development consistent with the P O C D. So kudos to you, uh Tiger, for for, you know, balancing. The the traffic and the um parking requirements having come from the parking. Side of the affair, I recall many tickets where people parked directly across that hash section or delivered um. Deliveries in creating unsafe conditions. So this will certainly prevent that. So no questions, just kudos on my part.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
Yes, um you know, I think Dan brings up some very, very good points about losing parking. It's um, you know, I'm kind of torn on this one. Um. When you, when you look at that intersection, um it's really the gateway into um our downtown and um, you know, if we. Believe in and we follow the uh downtown village design guidelines, um the proposed improvement. Uh with these uh bumped up bump out sidewalks is is actually a very good thing. Um short of the uh parking issue, but. Um I think this really does reinforce that entry into downtown. I think uh seeing people dining. Um maybe there's sculpture out there, different activities going on. I I think it's um in keeping with the downtown village guidelines. And I think it's um, you know, kind of a first step in in thinking about, you know, how do we really create a pedestrian environment uh on along that streak? But um, you know, kudos to everybody that uh participated in the design and um again, I'm, you know. Torn about the lo- loss of parking, but um I guess we can't have everything. Thank you.
Okay, um any other questions before for Mr. Man before I uh call the question? Or before I ask for approval or denial, sorry?
I I have one more follow-up question if I can. Um were there discussions had with the other restaurants on Elm Street about this new? Outdoor, this designated outdoor dining area. We're assuming that all the COVID dining areas will go away once this is built. So did the other four or five restaurants on Elm Street that will not be able to participate in this dining area, they weigh in?
We participated in a uh several Zoom calls with uh the chamber and all the. Establishments on Elm Street, both retail and uh and restaurant and showed them this plan and showed them what was uh what was being proposed. So they're all aware of it. There were very little negative comments at the time of those meetings. Like, you know, again, we're we're looking at it specifically as a pedestrian enhancement at the time. And not necessarily an adjunct outdoor dining.
Yeah, but it's both. We can't ignore the issue that it's both.
It's true.
So you're telling me, you're telling me that um. The three or four other restaurants that are not going to be in front of this, that are not going to have an outdoor dining ability, once this is all in place and the COVID dining is gone. They had no opposition to this?
Uh th- there weren't any comments at the time, Dan. The uh I, we did walk the area um. Friday, as a matter of fact, Lynn and I walked the area and I walked the area with the town engineer specifically regarding the new state statutes and while some of the the uh. Dining will be reduced, there will still be um available areas for dining for other establishments establishments up and down Elm Street specifically on the north side.
Oh, so then if if there's the ability, the the sidewalk is pretty consistent width all the way across Elm Street on the north side. So if those establishments are able to have outdoor dining in a quote-unquote safe manner and still provide sidewalk. Transit or tra- uh traffic along the sidewalk, this is now assuming the COVID dining is gone. Um why, why wouldn't we just do the same thing here and and create the islands that you're. Looking for that would help to restrict the illegal parking and unloading zones? And give back a net increase of four or five parking spots?
Again, we felt that it was just gonna, it would enhance the pedestrian experience and then safety of the pedestrian in the area. And then also help our maintenance activities at the time by having a.
Yeah, but.
Established curb line.
The maintenance, the maintenance argument really doesn't, doesn't fly because you're going to still have to go in and out with the plow on the south side, you know, to address that area. So it's.
Correct.
You can't say, oh, it's going to help me because I'm going to have a straight cloud because you're still going to have to do the same thing on the south side.
It's a little different, but there is a, there is an increased maintenance activity on the south, the southern side.
Right. I don't know. Um I I can see your points on uh at the intersections and at the crosswalks, but. I am a a a big advocate of maintaining parking in our downtown area, having, having witnessed a lot of loss of parking for. Point, you know, for fee in lieu of parking and for all the loopholes that we present to business owners, um it hurts us.
One of the uh, one of the aspects that we're also looking at is um in at three separate sections. Um along the southern side, we're we're proposing to add fifteen to fifteen minute parking spaces. So. The first two spaces on the at the intersection of South and Elm on the eastern side will be uh fifteen minute. The uh two spaces directly to the east of the crosswalk at the Playhouse on the southern side will be. Outside of the accessible space will be fifteen minutes and then one mid-block. Uh between the crosswalk at the Playhouse and Park Street will be putting in two more fifteen minute parking spaces to try to help. Um increase over, you know, uh basically turnover in those areas to help increase the parking as well. Those were approved by the police commissioner also. Gotcha.
I had a couple, I want to add the question that may be a brick that you're putting in. This is actual brick similar to the sidewalks that currently exist?
Yes, it's the the same material.
Same material. Uh fair enough. And um along the the north side where there's that long stretch of um enhanced sidewalk. Is is there going to be a a fencing or railing or anything like this between diners and uh and the roadway?
There isn't one proposed, no. It's a, it'll be a six-inch curb, uh six-inch granite curb along that edge.
Thank you.
Somewhere we have elsewhere. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Man. Um Commissioners, so in an eight twenty-four G referral, um the motion on the table is. Or the question on the table is this plan consistent? With the plan of conservation and development? Do I have a motion for? Approval or denial of that?
A move we approve, John Chris.
Okay, reasons for approval, John?
I see this as uh enhancing pedestrian safety. I see this as enhancing the uh uh vibrancy of our downtown area. Uh I see this as particularly helpful with uh our dining establishments. With uh outdoor dining, uh I see this as providing a more uh congenial. Um uh surface area for diners and walkers that will be currently are using. So I see this as a uh a plus and consistent with uh welfare issues of our plan and conservation development.
Hey, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Herring, um further discussion of the motion?
I would just like to say that the P O C D does specifically say seek opportunities to s- expand parking in the downtown area. For the record.
Okay, anybody else? Um, a couple of thoughts at my end, um. As as Mr. Man pointed out, the the objective here was not necessarily outdoor dining. But I think if there's any consensus in this town. That the one positive of COVID has been the increase in outdoor dining. And I think um, you know, when you think about it, the attractiveness of the town, the welfare of the town, the enjoyment of the town. So I I think. And I would just en- encourage the town and Mr. Man to continue to seek opportunities and be creative with, you know, other restaurants that uh may not, you know, enjoy the benefits of this. Um second is completely agree parking is important, but um, you know, I I think having gone through COVID here, I I think we are going to need to reimagine parking. I think for a while, for a long time, I think there's going to be plenty of excess parking. I think the issue will be, will be people willing to work from, say, for example, the railroad lot. I'm not convinced the railroad lot's ever going to be full, so I I don't want to get into a big parking discussion. I'll also point out that um Mr. Galante was the advisor to the town on this. Mr. Galante is extremely um. Experienced um and has done a a lot of work for the town, knows the town extremely well. Um so those are my thoughts. Anybody else? Okay, I'll call the question. Once again, the question is, is this consistent with the plan of conservation and development? Uh John Goodwin, I vote yes. Uh Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Radman?
No.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, and I'd like to add that this is also in keeping with the downtown village design guidelines.
Okay, uh Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavant?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Bash?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, uh motion carries. Um. Item number nine, one oh five Elm Street upon application, Jim Kane authorized agent for Don Hurstam owners for site plan approval, section four two C two to allow Dunkin' Donuts restaurant. In the retail A zone at one of one oh five Elm Street. Who who is here to present, please?
Sorry about that. Hello?
There we go. We can hear you.
Um I also have my architect on the call if needed. Um Brian Plord is his name if there's additional questions. But basically looking to move the Dunkin' from eighty-eight to across the street, have a little more space, updated look. And I guess just needs need a change of use from the previous clothing store to a Dunkin' Donuts. I can't hear anything now.
We lost our chairman.
Gotcha.
He went to get a Dunkin'.
Mr. Kane, what was your architect's name again?
Brian Plord.
He finished early, Joe.
Yeah, just my luck. Okay, we had no questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, could the applicant walk through some of the specifics of the renovation uh you're uh you're contemplating, including uh? I assume there's going to be a handicapped restroom on site?
Yeah, everything will be ADA. Um I don't know if Brian is on the call or yet, but. Um basically there's additional seating, upsta- updated look. Um just on, you know, all the new and latest coffee equipment with a tap system. It's just basically just a nicer upscale design. And we're we're really looking to capture the more space too that where we are currently is pretty, pretty small.
Kent Turner, um question, is this on two floors?
Uh. Just one floor.
It's just one floor, but there is a stairway.
Where do you see that?
The uh drawing A one point zero. I see that.
Oh, that, well, that that is a stairway that's out the back door in the on on that that site. It's inaccessible to the public. It's just kind of like it goes to a an upstairs and goes out to the municipal lot out back and also wraps around back door to Soleil, the restaurant next door.
So it's just a secondary egress?
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thanks.
So a question for you on the ADA accessibility to Mr. Chris's point. Uh the front door has a step in it. Uh your ADA accessibility you're achieving by the side door, which I'm assuming has a level discharge?
We actually have in the plans in the call, I could be more specific, just texted him. Did you were able to find Brian Plord?
He's, he's on as a panelist right now.
Yeah, I'm here. Hi, guys. Brian Plord from GR Engineering. So yeah, the front door currently does have a step in it. We're going to remove the step and add the ramp. Um the entrance, we will uh. Swap out the door, the existing door there with a um commercially available door with the proper hardware. Um and. commercially available door with the proper hardware, um, and to achieve the full ADA compliance, you're gonna have a push button, um, automatic door opener.
You're, you're gonna add a ramp, you said?
Yeah, it's a six inch rise, so we're gonna have a ramp from the threshold back down to the sidewalk.
That's, that's not ADA compliant. You need a landing area in front of your door, a level landing area in addition to the ramp.
We could possibly do that by pocketing the door further into the building.
Well, to my, to my first question, is the side door level with the, with the alleyway paving?
No, that, no, that threshold's at least six or eight inches higher than the
So both doors, so both doors are elevated?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I, I think you're gonna have to take a long, hard look at that ramp condition to make that code compliant.
Yeah, we'll work with the building official. We haven't seen their comments back yet either.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously we wouldn't be able to pass through building without all the proper, you know, um, specs anyway. And this, this was, I couldn't go to build again until I had this meeting. So that's our next step and I'm sure they'll work with us on getting done with, you know, write up the code. We're not gonna try to slide anything in, yeah.
Sure, understood.
Okay, anybody else?
That's Kent Turner, um, to the applicant, um, do you see any change in, uh, people's habits as far as pulling up, parking, running inside, getting their coffee and leaving, um? I, I would assume just because you're changing locations, the other side of the street, that, that really perhaps would not change. Do we have any traffic issues that we should be talking about or thinking about?
I think it's relatively the same, it's directly across the street, you know, we can't control what our customers, you know, do. Um, with that being said, you know, there's parking still, the set parking will still be the same, um, and we're, you know, we're right there. So I don't, I don't see any change or difference in that.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I have a motion for approval or denial?
I'll move it. I think that it's a good idea to get a better ADA compliant Dunkin' Donuts across the street.
Okay, I have a second. Kent? Okay, any other discussion of the motion? Okay, call the question, uh, John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Ken Turner? Dick Ward?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
The Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, passes. Um, item number ten. Eighteen Forest Street, AK ninety Main Street upon application John Luther Gates Restaurant authorized agent for Trio on Main owners for a site plan approval of sections four three B, four three C, three to replace patio windows with a garage door to promote open air dining, the retail B zone at eighteen Forest Street. Who's here to present, please?
Mr. Luther is, uh, he's here.
Is here or is not here?
Yep, he's right here.
Okay.
Hello, everybody?
Hello, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, would you like me to start?
Yes, please.
Um, applying for a glass panel, uh, panel garage door between the back enclosed patio and the dining room. The idea is to replace the existing French style windows that open but do not allow for an open aired environment between the patio and dining room. Um, this, you know, would allow us to better compete with the restaurants with, you know, more, um, uh, or larger outdoor, outdoor dining options.
Okay.
This is John Chris. So the, uh, replacement you're contemplating would be similar to a standard home garage door, except it's all glass with the rollers. Those go up into this towards just below the ceiling?
Uh, it's more commercial, but yes, I mean, it's similar. So it's, it would be metal framed, black metal framed. And, um, it would be clear glass. And so if it was down, you wouldn't notice a difference much, but if it's up, it would be open aired, so you'd be able to walk between the two. And it would just have a better, um, it would provide for a better ambiance during warmer months in the dining room.
Is this going to be something that you have to physically lift or is there gonna be like a garage door opener to move it?
Um, as it's designed now, it would have a chain that you pull, uh, that would lock. But, you know, that can revise.
So opening and closing, it, closing is human powered?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Actually, one other question, um, could you talk about insulation issues of this installation versus what you have now as far as, you know, cold air infiltration and keeping the heat in or the cold in as the case may be?
I've been told that, um, it'll be more effective in terms of insulation in the winter. Um, and we have, you know, radiant heating right adjacent to that, so that would help as well.
Okay, thank you.
The windows that are there are pretty old and have been there a long time, so I don't think they're, they're, they're pretty much like a sieve in the winter.
So you're saying that this will be a, uh,
An improvement.
Tighter instant, installation as far as, uh, heat leakage or AC? Thank you.
Anybody else? Everybody good? Okay, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Motion to approve Kent Turner.
Okay, Kent, reasons for approval, please?
I think it's a, um, environmentally, uh, great idea to, uh, be able to uh, open this window, this, this wall and use natural ventilation, uh, inside the restaurant. Um, and, um, it's, um, uh, contemporary design thinking. And, um, it will be a, um, I think a commercially, uh, successful thing and, um, I recommend that we approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, John Chris, I saw, okay, I call the motion, John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavan?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, great, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, items eleven, twelve, thirteen, um, the library, um, perhaps this, uh, point will be, um, moved, perhaps not when the night is over, but the record on this hearing was closed a few weeks ago. Um, we continue to receive communications, um, including directly to the commissioners. Um, I respectfully suggest that, please. The seedings, just to remind everyone, we now have Claire on the line, so seated for discussion and vote on these applications is myself, John Goodwin, Mr. Chris, Ms. Nielsen, Mr. Radman, Ms. Scornia, Mr. Turner, Mr. Ward, Mr. Cassavan and Mr. Bash. When we do come to a vote, um, we will consider the overlay zone. Um, if that's approved, we will consider the map change and if that's approved, we'll consider the special permits. As everyone, well, my take on our last meeting was, um, we largely agreed on the new Kane and Library application X of the resolution on the nineteen thirteen library. I do note that Ms. Nielsen had concerns on the usage of an overlay technique, um, as part of this application and, and more generally on the usage of overlay zones, uh, within town. What we agreed to do was to have, uh, Lynn and Pete develop, um, two potential approvals to be refined. Um, version one was sent to you, I think on Friday. Then Lynn cleaned things up a bit and sent version two today. Um, so I was thinking, um, you all tell me how you'd like to do it, but I was thinking perhaps it'd be helpful if we asked Lynn to take us through um, the current, uh, versions of each of the three potential approvals with, um, the overlay zone really having a, is really being the option A and the option B, so to speak. Um, does that make sense to everybody? Okay, all right, I might, I might have misspoke on, well, Lynn, why don't you go ahead and take us through, you know, the three ver- the, the three applications?
Okay. Um, thank you. So, um, there are three, you should have received three, right, three, um, resolutions, um. There's the regulation amendment, the, um, map change, which is the overlay to map the overlay zone and then the special permit. And, um, at, uh, as, um, Mr. Goodwin said, that at the, at the June third meeting, you guys directed me to, um, address, um, two options, option A and option B. There was no recommendation for a straight out denial, which is why you only see resolutions for approval before you. Um, so in order to try and keep things concise, um, I tried to include both option A and option B in specifically the regulation amendment and the special permit, um, resolution. There was no discussion about the map change, um, resolution, so there is only one version of it. Um, so if you were to, as you review it, there's both option A, um, which would, which, which I've noted at the top of, for instance, the regulation amendment where you would, um, include conditions number six and seven, but you would not include condition five. Um, and I've tried to embed them both in there, but uh, this is your resolution, so at the end of the day, if you think there are additional conditions that would um, add to what was intended for either option A or option B, or feel that some of the conditions are not um, as you intended, um, it's your opportunity to, um, make corrections and, uh, we can address those.
Lynn, Lynn, do you wanna go through, through the approvals? By the way, is, is Pete on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
He is here.
Okay, good.
Um, so specifically.
I mean, you, you wanna start by bringing up the overlay zone?
Um, the, oh, the, uh, the actual, do you want me to bring them up online?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think that would help.
Let me see if I so. Okay, if you start the conversations, I, um, I will, uh, I can bring it up in a second, but we, if we can start the conversation, I can bring it up in detail, because I just have to do a little bit of technology. So give me one second.
Hmm. If anybody's at their computers at home, uh, you, you did also get the email, um, but I realize being on a Zoom and sometimes trying to bring things up is.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna exit for thirty seconds. I'll be right back.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One second, sorry, my computer's a little slow tonight. One second, sorry, my computer's a little slow tonight. Okay, so thank you for bearing with me. Sorry for the taking some time. So this is the draft. Of the regulation amendment, which would be the first vote that you would have to take. And. Some of its uh. The first part of the resolution is all the um whereas is the perfunctory um statements. Then there's the findings and then there are um. Is the reasons for approval and then the approval. So for instance, um.
Hey Lynn, why why don't you just walk through? So we can skip the whereas is. Um findings, number one is simply states where the properties are.
Yes.
Number two um states that um the overlay zone is consistent with the goals and objectives of the plan of conservation and development. And are in performance with the comprehensive plan for the town.
Yes.
Okay, then the um. States that the adoption of the overlay zone will improve the welfare of the community. Allowing for the development of the library, then item number four. Is the planning zoning commission recognizes that section five point one O of the overlay zone does not retain the nineteen thirteen or nineteen thirty six library. Then item number five is Lynn, why don't you take us through that, how that works with option A and option B?
So with with option A, um condition five would not be there. It would just remain with um condition four. Option five was looking at up, um sorry, condition five was looking at option B. Which would um make an edit to the um oh to the regulation amendment, the overlay zone that was proposed by the applicant. And that would um consider the preservation of. Um significant historic structures on the site. Um and you and the commission as a whole at their special meeting on June third had a discussion about what historic was. Um there's uh there are actually two, uh there's a definition of historic structures in section two point two, which is the definitions in the new Canadian zoning regulations. But there's also a whole section um in section seven point seven that's um dedicated to the preservation of historic structures. So there's opportunities there for for looking at historic structures that way. And um this considers that that some aspect of the historic structures on site, which the commission would say are historic. Would be preserved and that a separate application would then need to be submitted to the commission with a final plan for preservation. Of any of the historic structures on site. And then the my the last two conditions, six and seven are um the the additional design changes with respect to um. Plant material and uh the the per- the provision that the any parking spaces on. Um require the um that electric charger be provided.
So Lynn, just going back to number five, so what what this is saying is tell me if I'm wrong. And um Dan, you were a driver in discussions with Lynn, so you jump in. What this is saying is that the library. As for historical structures defined in two point two, we ended up falling back upon a definition already in the regulations. That the library will have to, in this case, submit a separate application for approval by the application. Lynn, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, Dan, is that right?
No, it's not. It's it's kind of contrary to my point from the last meeting, which was. We need the library to present a plan on how they're going to preserve the existing structure before they put a shovel in the ground, before they get approval for the new building. I'm not against the new building, but what I'm just, and I I think many of us have expressed this, is we're just looking to see how the existing. Historic structure can be incorporated into the design. One of my suggestions at the last meeting was, you know, even if they shifted and relocated the existing structure. Not just a facade closer to their proposed footprint, they could find an easier way to integrate it and still maintain a. Um a lawn or a great lawn or whatever they were looking for. Um this this language doesn't do that. Um this this leaves it wide open for the library to go ahead and build the building as drawn. And come back to us a year later and say, well, we couldn't figure it out, so we're gonna give you some paving stones. The applicant shall preserve important aspects, facades or portions of all structures on site. That's that wasn't the goal. The goal was to maintain the historic structure. And a separate application shall be submitted to the commission with final approval, but shall not. Uh preclude of other proposed construction on site. Again, that that gives the library exactly what they're looking for, which is a way to build what they're doing right now. Demolish the old building, uh you know, two years from now and just say that we couldn't figure it out, so here's what you got.
So do you have language then? Because because I thought you and Lynn had discussed this and I thought.
We did, we did, and that that was my reply back to Lynn. I copied you on the email. I did not feel that this language represented the conversation we had. The the goal of my point was to provide language that would maintain the 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 historic structure as a whole. And be able to either keep it in situ and tie it into the new building or relocate it on site and tie it into the new building, making it an architectural feature. Of the new building, not as as written here and not as. Proposed by the library, which made the press, I'm sure all of you saw it about a week, a week and a half ago, where they. Proposed taking a portion of the facade and sticking it on the back of the gas station and calling it a day. That, I I'm sorry, but that's not the goal of the P O C D.
So do you do you have language then?
Well, so so as a suggestion for language, I don't understand why it can't be consistent with what we've, what the language is in in finding five. Wherein we say the applicant shall preserve important aspects, facades, portions of all structures on site that are older than nineteen thirty seven. Uh it seems like we kind of, we compromise that overriding point, which is consistent with what option B is. You know, that Dan is, that Dan is proposing when you, when we start talking about maintained in whole or in part. When you say in part or just an interpretation of section two point two. You're leaving the possibility, as Dan mentioned, of just slicing off a part of the facade facade and. A budding it next to a gas station and saying that's conservation. When what we should be doing throughout this document is really clearly delineating. For people to vote on a very distinct option A and option B scenario, and I think that gets muddled in this language. It gets less muddled muddled if we are just consistent in the language of the applicant shall preserve important aspects. That whole line as opposed to something that could be contrary to that, which is an interpretation of section two point two. Or in whole or in part, in part being emphasized.
So contrary, this is Krista Nielsen, um contrary to what I normally say about how I think the process should work, which is that I think. The zoning should come before the application. I think in this specific instance for the conversation tonight. The devil is in the details and the details are in the third resolution, which is the special permit resolution, and I think. If we are able to come to consensus there, then it's easier to kind of pull up, if we even want to pull up. To some more generalized language to include in the zoning regulation. Or frankly, we could just put the same specific language in the zoning regulation, because as I previously pointed out, it's only ever gonna apply to this project anyway.
Okay, so do you want to go to the special permit then?
That's my recommendation, but I mean, I'm open to other thoughts on how we do this.
I I think that makes sense.
Mister Chairman, I look.
Let's start there.
I don't know, when I look at this, um. As as far as using an overlay zone for this particular uh type of structure seems appropriate. In fact, the state law just got changed on this, so. Overlay zones exist. And uh I think particularly with very unusual buildings and. In a nice way, libraries are unusual building, uh would seem to be appropriate use of an overlay zone. Which would include consolidation of the various sub lots that are in their footprint, which seem very reasonable to me also. I I happen to like uh option A. You know, when I look at some of the points made, uh welfare of the community. Talks about supporting downtown merchants. Frankly, I think there's a lot more welfare uh benefits to the community. You know, assisting children with their education, we had a. Information or a submission from, a video submission from the students in our high school, how important this is to them. I can't remember the first time or really the last time. We had high school students uh make a petition to the uh or submission to the uh planning zoning commission. So I was very, very moved by that. I see this as a very important socialization. Uh venue for the entire town, for every demographic in the town, as well as for continuing education for the adult community. So I I think there's a lot more welfare positivity out of this. Um if we look at the nineteen thirteen and nineteen nineteen thirty six building, I know was always pitched as the nineteen thirteen library, but. Not really that it, it's more of a marketing statement. But it's the nineteen thirteen, nineteen thirty six, they always talked about them together, you know, forty percent of the building is already gone. And has been um taken away when the uh current library uh was was constructed, so. What we have now is is remnants of those original buildings. And while I understand the interest in in maintaining uh the historical na- the uh nature of these buildings, which, you know. Played a very important role in our community, um I I I think the statement in um. Uh point five of the um uh option A uh addresses that adequately, and I I don't see trying to re engulf. These remnant walls uh as as really a practical. Um uh practical solution, and so I I think option five is 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 appropriate. The planning and zoning commission, this commission will have full discretion to say yea or nay on any. Uh decisions or recommendations or applications on the part of the library regarding what to do with the um older structures on their property. So we have full discretion, so this really strikes me as the the appropriate way to go for uh for this application. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, well, but let's let's look at the special permit then. Then yeah, do you have that up there?
I just the special permit that's up.
Okay, so as Lynn says, an option A, there's no condition eleven, and option B, there is a condition eleven, okay?
So you really want to look at uh condition eight and condition eleven, those two conditions are really A and B.
Right.
But before we get down to the conditions on a special permit application, I think we also have to be careful about citing specific things in here. Again, I I refer to the P O C D. And item number K, as in as in craft, I I don't know, K. Under the findings where we specifically say here, the proposed New Canaan Library Facility is consistent and supports the following. Applicable goals of the P O C D, plan of conservation and development, achieve sustainability and resiliency. It does not achieve sustainability in that it is not. Maintaining the historic structure in town, which is one of the main goals of the P O C D is to maintain that balance of uh development and historic preservation. So I I I I don't feel we need to, I I I don't feel comfortable having that language in there.
Well, then that could be, you could take out that language for your option B.
That's fine.
Right, but I also think if we go with option B, and there is some level of historic preservation specified in the resolution, that maybe then we have achieved that, Dan. Would you disagree? I mean, currently, I would agree we have not, but if we are able to put something in this resolution. That requires some sort of preservation of the nineteen thirteen, nineteen thirty six options, have we not achieved?
Then then we have, yes, absolutely.
So I think it depends how that plays out.
I I I think under option A, again, the library would be required to make an application to this commission. Saying we wish to preserve a piece, what is now pieces of an older library. That's all that's left, and we uh would have, we as a commission, we have full discretion to decide on that, so. I I I think the full powers to achieve those goals will be uh are are fully realized in option A.
Can you go to uh finding number twelve, Lynn, please? Okay, so. When we, when it says in there, and I I recognize the language can be different for option A or option B or defining. Finding could be dropped for option for option B, but I would suggest to those that are contemplating voting for option A. Does it make sense to include that type of language that the New Canaan Preserved Preservation Alliance failed to present a compelling alternative? Or I'm sorry, compelling narrative as to why the planning and zoning commission should require the New Canaan Library to. I mean, w- we start talking about a compelling narrative. I think we have to acknowledge at this point. How comprehensive the effort was on both sides. How much time it took for both sides to put into this, and now this is a subjective. But I think most of us would agree that there was a lot of compelling points on both sides, so I don't understand the point of diminishing. The effort on one side um by saying it was not a compelling narrative.
Agreed.
I would, I would, I would agree.
I would agree, I would.
I disagree.
I would agree with James.
I think it just invites more divisiveness and um. I think a lot of us, you know, some of us would find it not to be true. And why wouldn't we want to introduce more divisiveness into a subject that's already extremely dividing? And in in a compelling, last thing I'd say about the compelling narrative, I mean entirely subjective, and we shouldn't be making determinations hopefully on things that are. Uh that we deem a compelling narrative or not. We should be doing it on the basis of. The regulations that we have purview over and our interpretation of the application in the context of those regulations in the P O C D.
Correct, which which brings me to point the finding number thirteen, which I believe should be struck completely from this document for both options. The planning and zoning commission should, we should not be worried what state of advanced development this project is at. In terms of evaluating its appropriateness to our zoning regulations and to the P O C D. I'm sorry that they spent ten years developing something that does not work for some of the town or some of the commission members. Maybe they should have done a little more due diligence on what was, you know, uh more important in terms of keeping the historic preservation of the older building. I don't think anyone's disagreeing that everyone wants the new library, a new library, to John Christmas's point. It's it's an incredible. Uh asset to the town that would that would increase the vibrancy and the then, you know, child develop, all the aforementioned items. But to say that we are now going to be concerned about what's advanced state of design the applicant is at. And that we, they've moved too far for us to reject them. That is a huge can of worms for every future application coming to us. Where we're gonna have people coming, developers coming to us and say, well, we just spent, you know, a million dollars on design fees in three years. But putting this together, but it doesn't comply with anything you guys have in your zoning regulations, but we still want to do it.
I think he can take out twelve and thirteen, and you're not really gonna damage the resolution.
Correct, correct. Correct.
Because the guts of it are in the condition when you get down to number eight, number eleven.
That's correct.
Which is why. I would. I would suggest we focus on eight and eleven, and we can always back up and address the rest of the document.
Agreed.
So as we move that direction, I mean, I wrote down some notes of a couple. Were terms that are being used, because I think we need to be consistent with whatever terminology. word, terms that are being used because I think we need to be consistent with whatever terminology we use. And it, it may vary from option A to option B, if that's the path we end up going down. But one of the things I saw repeatedly was a conversation about preserve and commemorate. To me, those mean two different things, and I don't know if that mean different things to other people, but I guess my I was curious, you know, where do we all stand on whether we want preserve, commemorate, or the combination of both of those? Because I, I think that's an important distinction to be made.
I think we should be using the term preserve or preservation. Commemorate. Commemorating is not the goal of the P O C D. Right? We're, we're not talking about a, you know, a flip book that has the history of the old library on there. That's not what it's about.
But then, then I, the good news is the library is way beyond that. I, I think we can stop talking about stones and flip books because we have advanced beyond that.
But according, no, we haven't because according to the published article in the paper that many of you have seen about a week ago, their current proposal is to take a fraction of the facade, of the facade and put it on the back of the gas station. So they're still, they're still in that mindset that they're only looking to take a, a fraction of the building as a commemorative wall or commemorative walkway or commemorative paving area. That's not preservation.
Preservation, according to the New Canaan Preservation Alliance is the building in situ. And I think we've all agreed that institute's not necessary. So maybe
Agreed.
Let me finish. The first thing we have to agree is what do we call preservation? The second thing is, look, my view is there's, you know, it, it's easy to say they're going to stick it on the back of a gas station. You know, that sounds great, but I think they are willing to go much beyond that. I think there, I think there's been movement through this process and, and probably in it perhaps, perhaps in their defense. Perhaps there was not through their entire planning process, you know, sufficient communication to them of, you know, certain aspects of the town feeling that the nineteen thirteen library should be, you know, preserved, however we define that.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree. I, I think the library is very amenable to an appropriate preservation strategy, which this commission would have full discretion to approve or not approve. What we have now is frankly, the remnants of two older buildings that have been engulfed into a newer building. The original New Canaan Preservation Alliance idea was what I refer to as the Back to the Future Strategy, which is essentially reconstructing what was there in nineteen thirty six, which means putting up quite a few walls as well as mechanicals and putting a new roof on. And the, the Simpson Plan talked about adding a portico and parking and having an easement on the library property and so forth, which is something beyond just preservation. But I, I really didn't see that as, as, as workable and I, I don't see the re engulfment of the older portions of the current library as very practical either. I, I think the preservation issues will be addressed adequately under option A. And again, this commission will have full discretion to say yea or nay on that. So I, I, I think those issues that have been, those concerns have been addressed regarding appropriate preservation. I think are, are A recognized and B being addressed properly.
So then is everyone comfortable with the use of the term preservation instead of commemoration? Meaning knowing that we mean, and I think we say it consistently, that we mean not in situ, but some sort of preservation.
But I, I think we have to allow for the possibility, Krista, that it could be in situ.
Right, agreed.
James, Chris, to Chris's point, well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say what Chris's point is.
You can, you can try, John. I'm not going to be
I'll completely screw it up. But no, the point is that, you know, unfortunately, I wish the New Canaan Preservation Alliance and, and our own consultant, by the way, had been willing to move from the in situ only or the highway position. And if it could end up in, in situ, quite frankly, personally, as I, you know, think about this over and over and over again, I'm not convinced the in situ position is the best position. I also do worry it could end up being if it, if, if it was sort of determined the way the alliance wanted it to be, it, it could end up being disconnected from the new library and it also could be a white elephant, so to speak. But I, I have no issue keeping in situ as a possibility. But I do think, you know, I, and that I thought we agreed this last month was that in situ was not required.
Correct.
Okay.
I agree with that.
I think if you, if you look at the last, if you look at the last sentence of condition number eight, that's really what it's, you know, it is the assumption that significant aspects of the nineteen thirteen and or nineteen thirty six, I'm not quite sure about that, building will be preserved in some meaningful way on, on the site. It doesn't have to be in situ, on the site. Subject to the approval of the commission.
Right, so I think all of, well, we can come, I think we should come back to the nineteen thirteen versus nineteen thirty six conversation. But I think the term preserved is important. I think meaningful way goes on to be potentially defined in number eleven. And that on the site, though not necessarily in situ, are all important pieces of what we're trying to say. That that, I, I agree with you, Dick, that that really gets the heart of what we discussed.
But then we have to, we have to look at number eleven then, because number eleven, the last sentence of number eleven basically gives the library an out. Alternatively, if there's no feasible way to incorporate such historic structures into the library, then the library will not be obligated to revise its site plan to incorporate the historic structures.
But if we do A, you're going to take out condition eleven entirely. You don't need it. I mean, that's, that's option B.
I actually thought
What I'm saying, that should not, if, if, if condition eleven is part of option B, then that last sentence should not be in there.
Correct.
Okay, that, yeah.
So Dan, you are the author, so to speak, of option B. So what you're saying is you would take out the sentence beginning with alternately.
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I think Dick Brooks have a really good point at the, the last sentence of condition eight, which states clearly that the, it is the assumption that significant aspects of the thirteen and thirty six building will be preserved in some meaningful way on the site. Now, how that'll be for the library to present to us, we'll have approval on that. And that brings me back to my, where is it? The other point, which was in was a special permit, was it the other one where it said that the library could proceed with its structure currently submitted application and building prior to submitting anything for the preservation of the old library. I don't, the, the two conflict. We need, we need to see what they're going to do before we let them put a shovel in the ground.
I'm against that. And
I, I know you are, but it's
But let me, let me finish, please. I'm against that. Because you, you know, the plan of conservation and development, you can view it as a positive consent or negative consent. So, and Dan, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but sake of discussion. You know, you're, you're saying it's a negative consent document, meaning that if it does not preserve a historical structure, then it's not consistent with plan of conservation development. You can view the plan of conservation development as a positive consent document. Which is, and I'm sure like you have been, I've been through the plan of conservation development and thinking about the library approval. And I am finding a lot of sections within the P O C D that are looking forward and arguing for, you know, the future of the town. And so to put a hold on the construction of the library, i- in my view, is also a violation of the P O C D. You see what I'm saying? You don't have to agree. But you know, that's the view is I, I don't feel we can hold up the construction of the New Canaan Library. I think that potentially, potentially could be disastrous for the town.
So
Agree with that.
Agree. I It'd be a darn shame not to have this new library built as soon as possible. I think the entire, I can't think of anyone in this town who thinks really that's a bad idea.
I agree with this.
If I may continue, sir, if I may. I, 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 I think it is a priority under our plan of conservation development to continue to invest in our town. And I think this is a key investment in our town for now, and I think for many decades to come. And I think delaying it further would be profoundly harmful.
Mr. Chris, I think what you're missing in my point is that no one disagrees with you. Not myself, nor anyone on the New Canaan Preservation Alliance, nor any one of the fifty percent of the town that are in support of his, maintaining this historic structure. They all, everyone in town wants a new library for all the reasons you've mentioned. The difference is that the library has chosen a route intentionally to develop a plan and a strategy for a new building that completely eliminates the historic structure. That's what's at, at hand here. So they made that decision for a host of different reasons, whether it be financial in terms of cost impact for the same reasons they got rid of the parking underground. You know, logistics in terms of staying in the existing building, which is one of our, you know, findings or conditions in the approval that it can stay in the existing building while they build a new one. There's a whole host of reasons they've done it. That doesn't mean it's right. It doesn't mean it's conforming to the P O C D. I'm saying that, I, you know, I think we're all frustrated that we've gotten to this point that the library has developed a plan that's gone this far, this deep, this involved and this costly without keeping the historic structure.
No.
It could have easily been done. I brought that up at the meetings. Their architect of record, Centerbrook, they, they've done buildings exactly like what we are talking about here, where the historic structure has been maintained.
And if I could add to that point, do we think that if we were to go back in time and granted, obviously we can't, and the library were to say something like this? This is the original, how they originally envisioned the design plan and they brought it to their donors in this fashion. You know, we're going to have this wonderful new structure. It's going to be the pride of the town. But we also, in keeping with the P O C D or the village district guidelines and the opinion of a lot of people that we surveyed, even when those, even though there's going to be some that are for the preservation of the structure and some that are not, we decided to default to preserving the structure because it's kind of indelibly linked to the character of this town. And so we're going to preserve that structure. We'll have less of a green. We'll still be able to have events on the green. Maybe not as many as we would before, as big as we would plan before, but we think it's the right thing to do and we can have kind of the best of both worlds. Does anyone here think that most of the donors and people involved in the library contemplated under that plan would have said, no, that's ridiculous. We want a bigger town green. Raise, raise the nineteen thirteen building. We are dealt, we are passively dealing with a bad hand that's been dealt to us.
Right.
We have a really lousy hand, but we don't have any agency to kind of go back on it because if we delay anymore, we're going to compromise this town indefinitely. And you know, that, that's, that's a real stretch. Because the reality of this is if we choose, if people choose option A, in all likelihood, this is going to go through litigation that's going to last at least a year. Could be much more exhaustive than that. The idea that this is going to be shovel ready, if we, if people choose option A, I, I don't think it's realistic at all. And then the other option we're given is if we go through that, if we go through in, in situ or non in situ, but somewhere in the library campus, campus preservation nineteen thirteen library, then the library is then going to go back and give back donations. I mean, this is, really? So maybe, maybe that happens, but is that really in the best interest of the, of the town? That's choice that the, the, the library will have at that point as well.
So it's a really, if, if I may say, the library has put us, the planning and zoning commission, in a really a really unfortunate position. I mean, they've had this plan. We, the planning and zoning commission have been, has, have visibility to this design for the better part of one or two years. Right? Pre-COVID. They could have come to us for approvals a year and a half ago, when there would not have been a condition of, you know, losing donor donations and being up against the timeline of, of construction and trying to get a shovel in the ground as quickly as possible now. It's, it's unfortunate, but here we are. And I think we just have to be careful as a commission to and, and again, we, we've all said that we're not going to have a, a, a condition of denial. We want two conditions of approval, but two distinct conditions of approval. And the option B, call it whatever you want, just needs to be clear on the, the level of preservation that we're looking for, while leaving the library the flexibility to be creative and artistic and, and do something that can work with their building and not giving them an out where they can say, you know, after their building is constructed, that they have no use or they don't see a way to preserve the old building, so we're going to demolish it. It defeats the purpose.
I, I think item A is not saying you can wait until after the building's constructed.
Let me find the line, hang on.
And, and James, one comment I make as, as far as litigation goes is we, we can't be driven by threats of litigation.
I agree.
No, I, I, I agree with you, John. We can't. But I think there's, there's the premise certainly on a part, a lot of people that have written, written letters to us, might be watching in on this call. The sense that if we go with option A, it's imminent and it's really P and Z. It's this commission, these people that would choose not to have a library for our town by saying there needs to be more preservation than a slice of the facade. And the, the reality is it's probably something that's different. And so I'm not saying that we should be governed by the threat of litigation, whether or not, I don't think we should. I agree with you entirely. I think what people, what not enough people understand is the likely reality of how this unfolds, no matter what we decide.
Ultimately, when, when I consider applications such as this or any application in, in keeping with our plan of conservation development and state laws, what's in the best long-term interest of the town and a canon? And I, I think option A, which will reasonably rapidly build the new library, which the town is, is crying for, a wonderful new building that I think could be a true landmark. And will also appropriately provide for preservation of aspects of the older library or what's left of it, which gives this commission full discretion. So if we want full discretion, we got full discretion. So it, it seems pretty straightforward to me.
Well, you don't, you don't think option B, you don't think option B would, would satisfy that though?
I, I, no, I don't. I, I think option A is straightforward enough. I think option B is essentially re engulf the remnants of the nineteen thirteen and nineteen thirty six library.
And, and so, John, John Goodwin, I, I think just to, just one last point on this. I don't think that this commission should make decisions on the basis of threats of litigation. I don't think that this commission should make decisions on the threats of donations being given back. I think what we think is right. I think we should, you know, again, I'm, I'm fairly new on this commission. But you know, I've been here long enough and been around town issues long enough to say that we're in a different position on this commission than someone looking in. And we have to make decisions on the basis of our interpretation of the P O C D, the village district guidelines and anything else that's relevant that's under our purview. My own interpretation of that is a level of preservation that is aligned with what Dan is talking about. And I can't really think of many structures in town that there, that's where it's more necessary to follow the stated main goal of the P O C D, which is a balance of conservation and development. Then this project where we can have potentially the best of both worlds, it might be more difficult to at this point. I recognize that. But there was an opportunity all, all along the way, and I don't want to preclude the possibility of that in the future at all. Because there's a longstanding partnership between the library and the town that's worked well for both of us. And I don't like the idea of ultimatum threats on either side.
In an effort to move this conversation about the resolutions along, I, I was because I'm a little confused myself on the process outlined in eight and nine in terms of, you know, whether we go with option A or B. So I was So I was, I have some questions and maybe Lynn wants to respond to what she was intending here, but if I read number eight correctly, it sounds like we're asking the library to present a consolidated report of options that they study to preserve or commemorate. I would prefer to see it just say preserve um, the historic buildings on site. And then an option or in finding nine, we tell them that they need to create a final concept plan um, that preserves or commemorates part of those historic buildings. I mean, I, I, to me, those are options that, those are findings that build on each other. The report of options would kind of be the whole menu. And then number nine is kind of narrowing down the menu to here's the one we've decided is best. And I don't know if you meant that to be sequential like that, Lynn, or if they were kind of the same thing in your mind. Could you tell me what process you were thinking that this would follow? Um, just so I know.
Chris, Krista, I can, I can jump in.
Maybe you can. Okay.
Yeah, I can jump in there as well. So originally, um, number eight was an idea I had and I talked about in the previous meeting. And I received feedback from all of you that there needed to be more teeth in it. So I think what I said to Lynn and also said to Pete is think about what can put more teeth into the concept that was in number eight. So in a way, you're right. They do build upon each other. Um, but, but that's part of the thinking there is, is so think about eight is something we want to achieve. And I, by the way, I have no problem based upon our agreement on the definition of preservation as a commission. I have no po- problem taking out commemoration. And, and so then number nine is okay, here's how we're going to get this done. And yeah, look, where, where I where I'm going to be repetitive, but um, you know, James, it's not about the library losing donations. It's about this project going forward. So what I'm trying to find here is for the project to proceed. And you've got, we're putting a timeframe of one year. You really have two years, but they're going to have to come up with something within one year to, you know, provide something that preserves the nineteen thirteen library and something that's satisfactory to the commission. I think, I think Dan, one of the, the, I'll make one more point to you is I think unfortunately, one of the points you made, which I think is, was a great point, I completely agree with you. Is that, you know, with, you know, we're, we're, we're all talking about winding back, winding back the clock. And if we could have wound back the clock, we would have had the nineteen thirteen library somehow incorporated. And you talked about this. Somehow incorporated into the new library. And you know, in my mind, I, I, if it could be done, that'd be fantastic. I, I think it may be too late, but you know, and then I also fall back upon, you know, what you've said about Mr. Herter and their architectural firm is, is you have, you have stated that, you know, the library has a top-flight architectural firm that has a track record of, you know, preservation, again, in the commission's definition of preservation. So I, I, I think that, you know, the game is not lost in terms of the preservation, even in option A. But, but I, I, I digress. Going back to your point, Krista, that, that's the idea behind eight and nine. Sorry.
Then I guess my next question is for Mr. Gelderman. If we ask through our conditions, the library to put together a report of options for preserving the historic parts of this property and come up with some sort of final concept plan built upon those options. Do we, as the commission, have any ability to opine on that after we close the special permit? Or is that still purely an administrative? Sort of like they can come back to us and educate us on what they've decided, but there's no back and forth conversation?
Well, I think it depends on how the condition is exactly phrased, but you can make that condition, can require the library to come back to the commission um, with a specific plan um, for preservation, if that's what the commission wants to accomplish. The difficulty with that, as, as we talked about at the last meeting, is what happens if they don't? Come back with a plan that's satisfactory to the commission? And so I, and I don't know the answer to that. I mean, if that condition.
Pete, can I give you an idea?
Sure.
What if there is some sort of working group of which, let's say the planner is a member of that working group?
Well, but that, are you assuming then, John, that, that an agreement can be reached? That a plan can be adopted that is acceptable to either the working group or the commission? Because there's no guarantee that it will. I'm just looking down the road. What happens to the special permit if that condition is not satisfied?
Yeah, I guess what I was getting at was can there be um, you know, with Lynn as the vessel of the commission or some other way where the commission has some ongoing participation in the development process as opposed to us waiting a year to get a plan? Because I, I think that's some of, you know. Go ahead.
Can I offer a comment?
Sure.
To, to that point, John, why does it have to be a year? Right? We, we are looking at um, condition eight and nine, or specifically eight. Why does it have to be a year for the library and their team to develop a a schematic? I mean, we're not looking for a full set of construction documents that are buildable and formidable. We're looking for schematic design that's presentable to a planning and zoning commission for an overall design intent of how they plan to maintain and, and preserve the historic structure.
To answer your question, I am not wedded to a year.
Yeah, I mean, knowing what's involved, knowing the players, in this case, Center Brook, and their capabilities and their bench and, and how, how good of a firm they are. I have no doubt they could put something together in thirty days, even if we wanted to be conservative and say, give them sixty days. Do it.
Use option A, put a clock on it.
Yeah, put an option A and put a clock on it. At least that'll give us, that'll give us as a commission and as a town, some level of comfort with whatever plan they propose. And I'm, and I'm being optimistic here that it's a, a workable viable solution that's agreeable to everyone. That they could come back to us in a shorter period of time before the shovels hit the ground and it becomes less of an issue for everyone.
I don't disagree. I thirty days sounds aggressive. I'm hoping, you, you know, but I, they, I don't disagree with any of that, but I, I do feel that they have to have the ability to get going. I don't think it's unfair to not allow them the ability to get going. But if you want to put their feet to the fire and make it a tighter timeframe, I don't have an issue with that.
John, it's Kent Turner. There are methods of, you know, delivering the project as far as the construction that um, could allow them to do that. They could have multiple bid packages that uh, they, they could have a foundation package, site civil, the building core and shell. Um, these are things that um, could advance while the design is being revised. Um, it's done through what they call an addendum process. And uh, it could result in little, if any, delay. It is feasible. It's done all the time.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll be happy to sit with the Turner Construction or whoever with the library to um, you know, help them uh, you know, guide them through that process.
Okay, you're talking about a redesign that incorporates nineteen thirteen?
That is. Yes.
Or is the nineteen thirteen preservation sort of a separate? A separate structure?
No, I think the premise is that um, we would, uh, that they would find a way to preserve and to incorporate into the new design, the nineteen thirteen design.
But what I think you're saying, Ken, is that they, there's also options for them to proceed. We don't have to stop all construction.
Correct.
While they do that process, they can continue to move ahead and figure out the redesign at the same time is what I.
Yeah, knowing, knowing Kent and I both know that how companies, larger construction managers like Turner work. This is not going to be a single big package of drawings that's going to hit the streets that's, you know, three hundred pages thick. It's going to be broken into packages as the architects and engineers develop the, the construction documents. There will be a foundation and site permit set that'll come out first. If you guys remember uh, when Merritt View and, and Carp and his team came to us, there were three separate packages that there was site development, there was foundation, and there was major structure. All, all larger projects are broken up like that and that we would allow the library to move forward with the first phase, let's call it that. Um, site development and foundation while they're still finessing and resolving and redesigning to whatever degree the, the aspect of the historical structure and how it's incorporated and, and in what may, um, what ways it's incorporated into the new building.
So but the, the issue that I have to raise here, guys, is if you had a situation where either party showed any indication that they were willing to proceed on that path, that would be a lot of sense. From the evidence that has been presented so far, there, there's no indication that, that the library wants to go that way. Um, I, I think that going down that path is, is quite difficult. I happen to agree with John that we need to get this library moving along. But I think that to provide it, you know, sort of a, 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 a less than complete guidance about what the expectation is will not do them a service, nor, nor even the folks from the preservation community.
I, I don't see compelling the library to take out a clean sheet of paper, redesign its building to reengulf the remnants of the nineteen thirteen and nineteen thirty-six libraries. I don't think that dog won't, well, that dog is not going to hunt. It just isn't. Um, and so I think the issue is either, is, is, if I, if I may continue, sir. I, I just don't think that dog's going to hunt. I, I think the issue is really what sort of preservation of these um, remnant walls of these two older buildings are appropriate. And really, I think that's where eventually we have to stick a pin in the decision. Thank you.
Well, that gets back to uh, number eight. Which I think number eight contemplates that the preservation of some meaningful portion, whatever that is, of nineteen thirteen is a separate structure located someplace, maybe where it is now, but maybe some other place, but on the same premises. But they can get on with building the new library that's already been designed.
But the, the issue I wrestle with is the nineteen thirteen, nineteen thirty-six library is not a structure. And that if you take away the non nineteen thirteen and nineteen thirty-six portions, you end up with a partial shell of a number of walls. There's no structure left. Unless you want to force them to re, again, go back to the future and completely rebuild what was once there in nineteen thirty-six, which is certainly probably doable in the grand scheme of things, but again, I don't think that, that, that's a dog that's going to, going to hunt. And so if you want to remain it, keep it there in C two, you'll just have essentially a number of walls uh, standing with uh, some windows.
So John, where you're wrong is the, the structure is there. It has been peeled apart over the years in order to incorporate the additions that have been done to the building over the years. But the pri- primary uh, structure of the beams and the supporting columns and piers, that exists. It's been clad over. It's been, it's been butchered, it's been opened up, it's been used. Ye- yes, it has. Yes, it has.
I've been in the building. It's not there.
I've been in the building too, John, and it, it will require rebuilding, absolutely. Only the, the east and the north facade are, are i- in their uh, original state to some degree. The, the west and the south facade have been butchered. But to say that it's impossible to, to keep the building as a footprint is not true. It is possible. It is, it's absolutely possible. Look at the, the report that was handed down from the P O C D's, of, um, sorry, the New Canaan Preservations Alliance's consultant. It's been done before. It can be done here. The, to your point though, let me finish, sir. Uh, to your point though, um, is it worth doing? I don't know that. That's not for us to solve. Our, our mandate is to maintain and uphold the, the, the code and the regulations that are in this town. And to your point, look to see how we can look to the future of the town and what's going to be best for the town. Some of us believe that the preservation of the historic structure is a, 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 a vital artifact of the town that, that necessitates preservation. Others, like yourself, don't believe that and think that, you know, s- some smaller facet of the building could be memorialized somewhere else on site and let the building go through. So we disagree on those points. But you know, to, the, the, the shell of the building is still there and it can still be saved. It could be done in situ, but I think I, I for one also agree. I don't think it's the right situation or not, or the right solution to do it in situ. I think doing it in such a way, and I said this during the last meeting, I'll repeat it again. But to take that east facade, take that north facade and take the footprint of what was that building, maybe shift it on site, which everyone's agreed can be done on site, and somehow incorporated into the building would be the level-headed compromise that could have been done years ago, but it's what we're talking about now. It would provide the town with the full library uh, design that we're, that's already on the table. And it would provide the other half of the town with the historic preservation that everyone's looking for.
So I have a question for Dan and Kent. If, if it was preserved in situ, wouldn't that um, cause much less of a delay in a redesign? Than if, if it was relocated to another part of the library campus? Isn't?
It would, it, it would, but yes, it would. Um, but I think the, the i- it comes down to staging and Kent, correct me if I'm wrong in my sort of understanding of what's going on here, but it, it has a lot to do with the library staging and operations in the existing building. And when they transfer out into the new building and how much additional cost it'll do, it'll take to make that transition, then keep the existing institute building and renovate post-move. So it's, it's sort of a compounding of, of costs. It all comes down to numbers and, and cost at this point because the preservation of the historic structure, whether it's in situ or whether it's shifted or how it's incorporated into the building, it's all dollars at this point. It's an increase in dollars, no matter what.
Now, now to that point, we have testimony from the town, first selectman that they would, you know, if it was appropriate preservation, what we're all struggling with. But you know, the town would be willing to help with, you know, that bill, so to speak, to your, to your point, Dan, it's all about dollars. I, I guess where I come out is I would still like to give the library within certain guardrails the flexibility to make the decision of whether it's, you know, what I think you and Ken are advocating, you know, design it into the building versus institute versus, you know, a potential third alternative. I, I'm a little hesitant to tell them that they have to redesign the building. I, I'd like the idea better of saying preservation, like we're all talking about, but give them some flexibility.
So, so just to pick up on that point and it, and it dovetails what, what you were asking before, Dick Board, about what is, what would, how do we define meaningful in the context of, of conservation or preservation? And I think it's, it's really important that we have a clear delineation between option A and B and what is um, conservation slash preservation. Within, within option A, rather than using the word meaningful, which to borrow, you know, a phrase from John Criss earlier, or who spoke is, is kind of a fig leaf in my mind, really kind of clearly defined what meaningful is. Is meaningful that twenty by ten slice of a facade, you know, abutting the western part of the campus? I- is that what meaningful is? I, I would hope that not the option that, that I'm going to choose, but for those that might choose that option, that it's really clearly delineated what meaningful means before you vote on it.
Yeah, I agree with you, James. That was kind of some of my other questions. I mean, I think we need to discuss whether we're only talking nineteen thirteen or nineteen thirteen plus nineteen thirty-six. I think we need to. I think we need to talk about the, the language uses the word building, it uses the word facade, it uses the words facade plus roof. So, I mean, I, I think the definition of meaningful is important, and I think those are some of the terms that you will find in that definition when we reach that point.
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
Well, I'd go the other way. I think, um, if you try to define all these terms. We'll be here for the next six months.
I, I don't know, but John, couldn't it be just option A? It's. Is the scenario that's been most currently contemplated by the library, which is again, twenty by ten foot. By so, so facade. But it, it, it could be that. It seems like that's where the library is willing to go. Um, that is movement on their part, I have to admit that. And so maybe it doesn't take months and, you know, hours of contemplating our navel. It's just that. That's what they've said. They. That's like, I interpret that, John, as like the last concession. We're willing to move to here. But that's kind of where we're parked.
Well, I thought, but, but James, I thought where we're going with this discussion. Uh, you know, potentially I was, I started to hope maybe there wasn't an option A or option B, and we could all agree. Um, meaning. That we don't predefine. Whether it's the facade or whether it's a redesign or whether it's in situ. You know, if, if we could, you know, again, I, I guess my line in the sand is. They have to be able to go ahead with their project.
Right, yes.
But if we could take eight and nine and, you know, maybe give it even more teeth, you know, Dan said shorten the timeframe. Let's shorten the timeframe. Let's put, you know, their feet to the fire. I just get where we all know, look, we're all professionals. We, we've all negotiated deals. And, you know, to, to try to define every single term, I think is going to be tough. So the way I'm thinking about this is if we can, and this part of my question of Pete and prob- and what I was trying to do with nine. Is if we can have, you know, participation in the process. You know, and perhaps this could be more creative and, you know, hey.
Yeah.
You know, maybe Mr. Herter is just itching. To do something really cool.
I think he is. I could put money on it.
John, John, can you hear me? John Goodwin, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I would just like to say, I, I, I really feel like everyone's really making the library kind of a bad guy, not trusting them to kind of do right by the process. I think they're, they may have been surprised about the level of support for the nineteen thirteen building. But guess who wants this project to go forward more than anyone? The library. So if we tell them, we want you to come back with something meaningful, preserving, remembering, whatever we want to use the words. I guarantee within six months, I wouldn't do thirty days. I think that's a little ridiculous. Three to six months, I'm sure they are going to come up with something that will be amenable to us. If we are engaged in the process, even better. But let's just give them a chance. Like, we are so busy saying they're not going to come back, they're just going to do this. Let's give them a chance. Give them three to six months, see what they come back. We don't need to define everything for them. They know their, their, they know their task right now, and let's just let them come back to us.
Well, we, we have to, we have to, there's, we're conflating a couple of things, and I think we just have to be clear on what we're defining. We, we can define what we want preserved. We don't need to define how we want to preserve.
We can agree on this commission what we want preserved.
But Claire, can I make a point? Just, I, I hear you totally. My concern overall, Claire, is that in three to six months in that time period, and I agree with you that the library will come back with something. That, um, many will deem, you know, meaningful and substantive. Um, that we're in the same position three to six months down the road with, and having this a similar sort of conversation as we are now. And I think we all want some resolution. I don't know that three to six months' time and the library coming back to us is really going to afford us. A clearer resolution than what we would have, you know, if we were to make a decision three soon.
So what are you suggesting?
I suggest we really clearly delineate some of the terms so that we have resolution around what an option A and option B looks like, and we take a vote.
Right. I, I would agree with, um, Commissioner Tuscorni. I, I, I don't think getting too deep in the weeds is, is, is really appropriate. I would like to hear what the library has to say. I think your comments that the library has been seen as the sort of the bad guy in this, I would, I would agree with that. I, I, I think the library has, um. Certainly a view on what they feel is appropriate for their property and, which is, I get that. But I think they have heard some of the, uh, views of the town too regarding preservation. And, um, you know, my view is ninety days is more than enough, but I would agree with the chairman too that we need to get off the dime on this one. And I think there is a compelling need, need in, need in our town for a new library. And, um, time is money and TikTok, um. You know, the longer we wait and the longer we argue about this, you know, the, 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 the less of a library we're going to end up getting, no matter what it is. And I don't think that's in the best interest of the town in New Canaan today or twenty years from now.
I hear what everyone's saying, and I, I can agree a bit with both sides. I mean, it does seem like we're going to the weeds to define what we think is meaningful, and yet. I'm afraid that the ten to twelve year process that has led us to this point hasn't been specific about what was meaningful, and that's why we're here now, and I'd hate to give them. Three to six months more and have them come back with something that's still. Not meeting the expectations of people. So, I mean, I, I, I don't want to necessarily regulate. This, but I think we should be very clear to them, like which parts of what's historic in our eyes. Should be preserved in some way so that we don't, you know, just kick this can down the road, as someone else has said, you know, three to six months, and then have to say, oh, sorry. You still didn't nail this one.
Great. Number nine says that there will be an external advisor hired by the town. So presumably we have some say as to who will be the external advisor to work with the library. To come up with some meaningful preservation. And I, I think that. I, I agree with John and, and others that they have to get on with this, with the basic library, the new library. And to hold that up. We're, we're going to have a lot of. Lot of people unhappy.
Okay, so I'm going to take off my partisan hat. I'm going to put on my chairman hat. Maybe what we could do, and, and again, I'm, now I'm just trying to listen. It seems like, I thought we could reach consensus, but I think we've diverged again. Um, so maybe we're back to option A and option B, and option A. The corpus of option A is probably eight, nine, and ten. And then. I think option B is what some of you are saying is you want to define what has to be preserved. That's now sounding like option B. I mean, is that right? James, Dan?
I don't think we can define it.
Well, I don't want to, but.
No, I think we can. I think it's our responsibility to define what the historic structure is that we want preserved. I agree with you, John. Option B would, would say to some degree, and, and I'm just. Whether it's the, you know, noting that it's the east and the north facade and, and roof line associated with those two are preserved to some degree on site. You know, we all agree.
Dan, how do we get there then? Meaning, what I mean is. You know, we, we reached out for, for special meeting dates, and clearly we're not going to take a vote tonight. But. You know, Lynn needs, Lynn is, nothing against Lynn. She's not the one now to define this. I think, you know, for, for those of you who feel that it should be delineated. You know, it's now up to you all to figure that out and tell Lynn what to put into option B. I mean, feel free to tell me if you disagree, and if I'm misreading this, but.
You're right. We got to do that. That should, I mean.
Okay.
Incorporate the facade in some meaningful way.
Yeah, and I think I.
Oh, no, but, but Dick, Dan is saying you can't just say incorporate in some meaningful way. I think what you guys are saying is you're going to define, which scares the heck out of me.
Yes.
But, but.
But they incorporate the facade, okay, then the facade is going to have to appear. In the meaningful way, and what else is it beside the facade?
But which facade?
East and north.
Why that?
Because those are the remnants of the old buildings that are still intact to some degree of originality.
I think.
To your point, to your point, the south facade and the west facade have already been taken apart and modified to. Integrate the additions that were added over the years.
They've been torn down.
So, so what, I, I think, you know, to that point, we already have the basis of some of the language, and it could be further fleshed out, clarified. But in finding five within the overlay zone draft. When it says, and I quote, the applicant shall preserve important aspects, facades, portions of all structures on site that are older than nineteen thirty seven. I think that's an accurate characterization of what scenario B is going to look like, and again, it can be further fleshed out. Very soon and should be very soon. Um, but conceptually, that's what it is. But.
I still think scenario A is more than adequate for us to achieve the needs that have been discussed by this commission and by the community.
I know, and, and look, we're, I, I, I know this is going to be one of those things, it's the vibe of the town, it's dividing with commissioners. I, I get all that, John, like John Chris, I, I totally understand your points. I think what it might come down to is different interpretations or weightings. To different aspects of the P O C D and the village district guidelines. Along with the, the overriding notion, and I totally understand your part. And, and others, that this is a project that's really important to the town. And, um, yes, we've been dealt a really lousy hand, but. It's from this moment forward that's relevant, um, and I totally get that. I, I understand where you're coming from.
Okay, well.
John Goodwin, would it be option A would be what we have now? And option B would be like, we're going to dive in and tell the library what exactly it is they need to come back to us.
I'll let Dan and I'm, I'm, you know, now I put my partisan hat on. Eight, nine, and ten is the core of option A. And. I guess what. I just finished real quick, Dick. What we need, I, I guess James and Dan to do is to come up with options to, to wordsmith option B. Sorry, Dick.
I was just saying that you could have option A, eight, nine, and ten. I agree with you there, and, and I think that you can put, put maybe a few teeth in that. To. You know, I don't want to say it makes it closer to option B, but maybe it just makes it clearer that there is some meaningful preservation.
And, and if I can just speak to option A, I, I sincerely believe that giving the applicant, if it's option A, giving them ninety days to produce. A solution is not unreasonable at all.
I would agree with that. I think ninety days is enough time.
It should not take a year.
Ninety days is enough. It's like a lot of things, give them a week, they take.
Let me, let me be clear about the year. I plucked that out of the thin air. I'm completely flexible.
No, and, and just to, just to complete the thought, it's for both option A and option B, quite frankly. There's nothing that says for option B, they can't produce something in ninety days that could satisfy our concerns.
Okay, well, let me ask you and James and whoever else wants to jump in. Can you guys come up with wording within the next week?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I'm so confident in Dan, no, I'm just kidding. Pass the buck, pass the.
They won't be able to agree. I can see it coming.
Wordsmith.
Okay, and, and let me ask, uh, Pete, Pete, well, so I think we have an agreement, which is, um, eight, nine, and ten will. Form the core of option A. Um, to Dick's point, if, um, for those of you who believe in option A, who can put more teeth into it. As well as Lynn and Pete, we can beef that up. Then James and Dan will work on option B. Um, and then it seems to me, Pete and Lynn, tell me what you think about this. I, I think it was good that we moved to the special permit. And I think if, if we can get these two options. Um, drafted in the special permit. Then we can backfill into the overlay zone. We will have an overlay zone option A and an overlay zone option B. Lynn, I, I think where, what we need to do different this time, Lynn. Is we need to have an option, tell me if you guys agree. We need to have an option A for the overlay zone and an option B for the overlay zone, and we need to have an option A for the special permit and, and, and an option B for the special permit. Just to make it crystal clear, because Dan is right, and Dan, I knew you were going to bring this up because I agree with you based upon your position. Is, you know, some of the stuff you read and, you know, some of the, the, the findings. Is, you know, counterintuitive to, you know, option B, so obviously it can't be in there. So we, we have to break out these documents so we have consistency of language for each of the respective votes. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
Everybody else, does that make sense?
Yes.
Yep, so Dan, you can, Dan, James, you can work with Lynn over the next week.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah. Because what I would like to do is I would still like to explore getting a, oh, Kent, Kent's yelling at me. What's up, Kent?
Kent wants to be part of the party.
Even, even though I wasn't invited to the party.
Yes, please.
Well, you, you broke the volume on your computer, so.
God damn it, I've turned it up as loud as I can.
All right. I'll, I'll be the layman of the group.
Wait, I thought Kent was going to talk.
Then he muted himself.
He just volunteered.
He just wanted to be part of the party.
Is this a sign of what's to come? Just muting yourself over the.
Seriously, Kent, did you have something to add?
No, I just would volunteer to help out.
Oh, 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 I'll be part, okay, now I get it, okay. The light bulb just went on. Um, and then Pete and Lynn. I mean, do you, do you all agree that if we, we come up with option A and bu- option B and the special permit? That then gives us the ability to backfill into the overlay zone? Do you agree?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
When do we have to decide? When do we run out of time?
Uh, we still have lots of time. Lynn, what's our deadline?
Um, well, um, as Pete, the chairman says, um, last meeting, it's sixty-five days to close the public hearing, which is on May twenty-fifth. And, um, our July twenty-seventh meeting would be sixty-three days from the close of the public hearing, so we would have to have a special meeting sometime in July.
Oh, so I was wrong. So we need to have a special meeting in July?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
Not a problem.
You know, in a way, that's good anyway. Now, the, the only thing that I'm concerned about. Is that I think it's very, very important that. Um, all. How many seated do we have? Eight, nine? We have eight people seated, right?
Nine, nine seated.
I think it's very important. We just got to reach a date in which all nine vote. I don't want, I don't want eight, because I don't want a four-four tie. I mean, I'm not saying it would happen that way. Um, but I also think it's just important. I, I think all of us that are seated, we have to own this one way or another, so.
Yeah.
Okay, should we move on? Pete, Lynn, questions?
Not for me.
Lynn?
No, not right now.
Okay, but we have a game plan, clearly delineated, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Item number fourteen, docket number L N D C V nineteen dash six, one, two, zero, nine, four, seven, dash S. David Marquados at Al versus Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town in New Canaan. At Al pursuant to the memorandum of decision from the Superior Court Judicial District of Hartford dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. In accordance with the judge's decision, the matter is to be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its considerate. For its consideration in accordance with the judge's decision. Um, Pete, brief us, please.
Uh, this. Is a referral from the Zoning Board of Appeals, um, because Judge Berger. In the land use court, well, let me back up and tell you what this was. This, a zoning permit was issued a few years back for some. Interior work at Grace Farms. And. Without getting into timelines or anything like that. Uh, an appeal was taken from that issuance of a zoning permit to the, um, to the Z B A. Z B A sustained the decision of. The zoning enforcement officer who was prior to Lynn to issue the zoning permit, it was appealed. Judge Berger remanded the case back, basically Judge Berger determined that. It's really not up to the Z B A to interpret the intent or to determine the intent of the special permit that was issued in two thousand seventeen by. The planning and zoning commission. So he remanded the case back to the Z B A to ask. For the Z B A to ask the P and Z. For some help with that issue, basically to. Give its position with respect to. The meaning of some of the provisions of the special permit. Now, tonight. The the intent tonight is not to discuss it in any substantive way. But to push it over to the next meeting because there are other, there is the other parties. To the litigation, and they are. The Marquados's attorney, Amy Suchin's, Grace's attorney, Brian Smith, who would probably want to have an opportunity to at least address the. Commission about this with respect to their. Feelings and. And that we told them would not be happening tonight, so we don't want to get too far into detail. Rather. The hope is that the commission, some of you weren't on the commission in two thousand seventeen. So you may need to. Kind of get up to speed a little bit, and during the next month, hopefully. You can do that. I'm certainly available and Lynn would be available during that period of time to answer any questions that might come up. And then in in. At the next meeting, there would be kind of a. A little more detail and maybe a couple of, I hope, short presentations. It's not going to be a public hearing. There's, it's not something where. The public is going to be allowed to participate, but simply. The parties, the attorneys representing the parties. Could make some statements to the commission if they felt it was appropriate to do. That was sort of something that Judge Berger. Uh, encouraged, so. This is really, and just make it a little bit more complicated, there was a second. Zoning Board of Appeals. Decision. Also involving a zoning permit that was issued. That's been put on hold, but your your. How you interpret. The special permit with respect to this case will also sort of, I think. Uh, determine how the other case is. Is decided as well, so. So basically, the the judge has asked the planning and zoning commission to determine whether or not. The zoning permits that were issued were within the. Scope of the special permit or. Were they? In a sense, outside the scope of the special permit and something that should have come to the commission as a modification. You recently had a modification of the special permit that came before you with respect to. Puddin Hill, I think you you were on the commission then, and so that's really what the issue was, should that have? Does that need to come back? Do those things need to come back to the commission? Were they within the scope of the special permit? So. That's all I really wanted to say tonight, and then there'll be a little bit more detail in a month. When we come back. Can I ask Peter a question? Is the judge expecting the Z B A to now ask? P and Z? What? Does P and Z, how does P and Z interpret? Condition six, that's the one about the intestification of use. That's already happened, Dick. Well, they're back, but we haven't told them what. No, no, that's right, that's right. They have asked. And now the ball's in your court. But my question is. Does this require? The opinion to come from the commissioners that were on the P and Z board at the time of? Twenty seventeen? Well, no, it it's the commission as it now exists. Obviously, the members who were on the commission in two thousand seventeen. Are certainly in a better position. Uh, to know what they. Intended. Intended at the time. But. The commission exists now in its present form, so it's been the 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 judge's order was. Uh, for the Z B A to refer the question to the planning and zoning commission. It's up to the commission to determine whose opinion may have more weight or may not have more weight. Or everybody's opinion could be the same, or everybody will have the opportunity. Uh, to determine. What the what the resolution from two thousand seventeen actually means, but. Dick, I agree with with what you're saying, conceptually, it makes sense that. But that's not what the judge ordered, so what the judge ordered is sending it back to the commission as it. As it currently. Exists. To address the question of the application. Of the conditions of the twenty seventeen permit. Essentially, yes. Yeah, that's, those are, there it is, words, yeah. Yep. All right, well, we can do that.
Okay, thank you, Pete, appreciate it.
Okay, John, no problem.
Okay, take care of yourself.
You too, thanks. Good night, everybody.
Good night. I I item fifteen, planning subcommittee update. Chris, you got anything for us?
Uh, we're looking to have another subcommittee meeting. We didn't want to do it tonight because we knew this was going to be a long one, and we didn't want to subject you to any more torture than you're already going through. But maybe when we do the special meeting, is what Lynn and I talked about in July, so. And and at that meeting, we hope to really just. Get the subcommittee to come, I mean, I don't think we're far apart from, you know, coming to a place of recommending the language for inclusionary zoning that we've worked on. That's our hope is to just really hammer that out so that we can bring it as a recommendation to the full commission. At the July's regular meeting.
That's great, okay, super, I love it, thank you. Uh, Lynn, item sixteen, admin action, do you have anything for us?
None.
Okay, item seventeen, approval of minutes, we had a May twenty fifth regular meeting, do I have motion? Well, does anybody have any changes to those minutes? No, do I have a motion of approval or denial?
Move to approve.
Move to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Barrett Tascornia?
Yes.
Ann Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
Uh, who did I see who for? Who did I see for Phil?
Um, James Bash would be voting for Phil.
Okay, okay, so Chris, you're not voting on this one. James Bash?
Yes.
Okay, super. Um, June third, special meeting, any changes to the minutes? No, motion for approval?
I'll move again to approve.
Second, perfect, John Goodwin, I vote yes.
There were three of them.
Dick Ward, Dick Ward voted, uh, seconded.
Okay, sorry.
John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Ann Radman?
Yes.
Barrett Tascornia?
Yes.
Ann Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Okay, super. Special thanks to Claire and Dan for dialing in from vacation. Um, enjoy the rest of your vacations. Dan, good luck on beating your wife and getting more fish. That getting more fish, not what it may have sounded like.
Your wife sounds questionable.
I'm getting in real big trouble here.
She heard you.
Uh oh. Tell Stephanie I'm sorry.
She's laughing.
Okay, good night, guys.
Bye, guys.
Bye.